Good afternoon, good evening. This is the Watsonville City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 27. I guess we'll start with roll call. My name is Ari Parker. I am the Mayor Pro Tem. Mary Dutra is unavailable and will most likely join us later in the meeting. So we'll start with roll call.
Yeah.
President.
Garcia.
Here.
Gonzalez. Hurst.
Here.
Montesino.
Here.
Parker.
Here. Thank you. And then we'll move along to the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll do it because I won't put somebody else on the spot, but maybe I'll save that up for next year. If you would stand. Ready? And salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Maybe see it. Okay. So on the report of dispersment, miscellaneous document report and any written reports by council members regarding actions taken on the regional commissions or board meeting, I hope we've all had a chance for review. And we'll move on to presentation and oral communications this time is set aside for members of the general public to address the council on any item not on the council agenda. So all speakers are asked to announce their name in order to obtain an accurate record for the minute. And we'll begin. And Madam Clerk, and who else is handling that? Is that you?
I help you.
And thank you, Tamara.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, we're going to start with Steve. Go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Council, and good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and City Manager and all the other officers. I would like to speak about the fact that now that the census data has been released, all of us are very curious to know how much did we gain in population or lose in Watsonville? And will the city council districts be changing anytime soon as they are supposed to do every 10 years? After the census is taken, we have reapportionment. So I'm very much looking forward to an article in a newspaper or something from City Manager tonight, or if not tonight, soon, about the process that hopefully going to take place. I also want to recognize the fact that we in this community have responsibility to each other to take care of our beautiful wildlife and our beautiful water life, the lagoons and the sloughs and the waterways to keep them clean. And I have only the fact that we, so many people use them as I do as well. I'm more than happy to help clean them up. And I know the mayor was cleanup duty last, apparently last, last weekend. And I know that Councilmember Estrada has also frequently participated in that simply because of the fact that we have less water this year as well. Because we've had a dry year and we need to take care of the water supply that exists to make sure it is not poisoned, it is not polluted or contaminated. Because the bird life is what helps make this city the ville for the birds. So, thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to the rest of the meeting.
Thank you, Steve. Madam Clerk, next caller.
Hi, my name is Ellie. You need to have a set discussion and vote again to reopen ad hoc meetings. It's pure comedy that you're claiming you cannot properly participate in a meeting if the chat is too distracting. It's borderline childish, but our children have been doing better than y'all. That how committee members and city council were not aware that we're going to vote at the meeting? Jimmy Dutra wasn't even there for the discussion, but as soon as he heard, let's push community out, he voted yay. And that's all he's done since joining council, so no surprise there. Paco, disappointing to say the very least. The committee isn't in charge of the agenda, much less the process. It is city staff that has been poorly running this ad hoc committee from changing the format at every meeting to intercepting and holding community emails to creating such a toxic work environment that the recipient of the Jefferson Award, Joyce Flynn, quit her job. And not only have you not apologized, you haven't even acknowledged it nor said how you grew from it. I'm guessing it's because you didn't. Now you're using community members as scapegoats because we don't care about respectability politics. I can talk to you in a sweet voice. I just don't need to to prove a point. Do you understand what I'm saying? Read up on respectability politics. It's clear that y'all need more of an education so that you understand that, yes, I'm angry. Clearly, I have a reason to be angry. And everything that Joyce Flynn said in her letter was true. You guys don't listen to us because you tone police us because we don't talk the way that we, that y'all want us to talk. It's ridiculous. The members that signed up, I signed up for that al-ha committee. It said on there what you were signing up for. If they knew the topic at hand and the process set up at the time, if they feel they can no longer participate with community, that it's them that needs to remove themselves from the committee. Don't use this as an excuse to push out community because they can't do it because they feel uncomfortable. They knew what the subject was. They knew we were going to talk about policing and they knew that it was going to be in front of community. If they can't do it, they need to be left out. You don't need to be kicking us out because of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Next caller.
I have a phone number ending in 884.
Thank you. Announce your name, please, when you're on.
Good evening, Council. My name is Gina Cole. I am a constituent of Ari Parker in District 7. I am calling tonight to ask you, please, to recognize that we are in a transportation crisis in our community. And you know, we have, we are sitting in a spot right now with regards to the business plan for the RTC's TCA business plan. I am urging you tonight, if this does not move forward, Watsonville will definitely suffer the consequences. I urge you to take emergency action tonight. I urge you to adopt an emergency resolution as our city friends in Santa Cruz did today and support the business plan as presented by the RTC. We are at a stalemate. This affects the citizens of Watsonville. We live in a place where a lot of us have to commute to Santa Cruz. We don't have a lot of options. It's creating stress on our highways. It creates stress for our families. It makes people sit in traffic on, on most days. There's a huge transportation barrier for us in South County. Passenger rail gives us an equitable access ability. This is looking towards our future. You have forwarded buildings in Watsonville that are looking towards the future. And the apartments that are coming up, they each have one parking space for those small apartments and those studios. That's one car for families to share. And if we give folks an option for rail transportation, it's not going to be immediate, but it's leaving the option open. I don't want Watsonville to say shoulda, coulda, woulda when we have an opportunity to break the stalemate and to offer our support. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other callers or speakers?
Yes, go ahead, Carmen.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. This is Carmen Herrera with El Pajaros CDC. And today I'm calling just to let the public know and the council also that we are presenting a series of workshops on marketing and promotion for, in Spanish. This is for Spanish speaker, business owners. And we're starting this, it's a series of workshops. We're starting this one on April 28 tomorrow from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. And then we're going to have on May 5th, May 19, and May 26, other workshops. It's about 10 social media marketing strategies for, for business. These are free of charge. They're in Spanish and to register, we're asking people to call 831-722-1224. Again, 831-722-1224. And this is open for anybody in Watsonville or anybody in the tri-county area. And I take this opportunity to thank the city of Watsonville for being one of the partners in helping us bring this kind of opportunities for the businesses. And as I said, these are free and they're in Spanish. And I don't know if I need to translate this. I'm happy to do that if that is possible or necessary.
Carmen, we do have an interpreter and she's been interpreting what you said.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. And please share this information with the community. I'm posting on Facebook.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next caller.
Nancy, go ahead.
Hello, I'm Nancy Classpo Navarro. I don't know, and you know, thank you for all the work you're doing. I don't really know policy here. I got some kind of a thing on my door that talked about attending this meeting. Are you going to have an agenda, item 10B, that I can talk about later, or should I talk now?
No, if it's on the agenda, then you need to speak to it when it comes to that.
At that time.
Can be, yeah. Can be as a part of, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Barry.
There you go, Barry.
Barry Scott, thank you. I'm, I'm a resident of Aptos and many of you know me as an advocate for the rail trail and rail transit, really mostly rail transit. I have been attending as many meetings as I can of the RTC, but also Ambag and the Transportation Agency for Monterey County, as well as some city council meetings here and in Capitola. I can tell you, and I don't usually talk about my background. I have a degree in architecture and a deep background in planning, including transportation. I was the, I was a clean energy hero Monterey Bay Community Power last April. Thank you, Monterey Bay Community Power. And this is all I do, energy efficiency with a, with a, with a minor inequity. And I got to tell you, Ambag and TAMC are shocked that the RTC tied the vote on the rail business plan. This is a business plan that was endorsed, and I mean endorsed this, this past couple of months by the California Coastal Commission, by Caltrans, by TAMC, by Ambag, by the City Council of Santa Cruz, and last year by the, the City Council of Watsonville. And there has been an effort, a campaign afoot by certain interests to tear these tracks out and convince people that it's hopeless. I'll tell you something, the 6-6 vote is a temporary stall. It's not going to hold up. There are commissioners who are going to change their mind because they didn't have all the information and they felt a little bit afraid to, to vote to support this rail transit business plan, which is going to make so much difference for Watsonville. It's an equity thing. Whether it requires a sales tax or not, we don't know because the business plan is going to tell us. Whether or not the ridership is going to be a few hundred or a few thousand a day from Watsonville, we don't know until we do this business plan. So for all the scare tactics that you might be hearing from the opposition, listen to the agencies, listen to the RTC staff and pass this business plan. Do whatever you can to join Eduardo and Aurelio and support this great idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller.
Go ahead, Celeste.
Or speaker.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi, hi, everyone. My name's Celeste Gutierrez. I'm on the policing and social equity ad hoc committee. And I just wanted to share with all of you that prior to us having, we had a special closed meeting where we voted to close the meeting that I just wanted to share with the community that prior to us having that meeting, we were not informed that we would actually be voting to have that meeting. And during that meeting, I asked city council members that were present and city staff if they would be sharing that with the, with the community. And I have yet to see anything from city of Watsonville or council members sharing that information with the community. It was actually me that came last week and shared with the, during, during public comments that the meetings would be closed going forward. So my question to city council is, when were all of you planning to share this news with the community? I think it's really important. Or if they were even planning to share it and it had, what community members have to have gone to the website to discover that they were going to be closed going forward? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very kindly. Are there any other callers or speakers?
That is the last speaker.
Okay, then we're moving on with communication from the council. Councilman Estrada, would you like to begin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. And thank you for stepping in for the mayor, doing a great job. I did want to address the Police and Equity Committee. And there's just a couple of things that I just wanted to share. First off, you know, to the callers that are
Ari, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Well, okay, I see your voice is moving. I lost audio, so I'm going to have to log off and then I'll have to log back in. Okay?
All right.
Thank you for restarting my time.
Thank you for resetting.
You know, the first thing I just wanted to say is that I wanted to thank the city manager and his team for having the courage to even have this entire process. It was a really difficult time for, for the city. They have been working tirelessly for the entire committee to set it up, to try to get us experts to, you know, they, they work night and day, they miss time with their family to, to really have this process. And so, you know, I want to thank Matt, Tamara, Liz, our facilitators, Copa, and especially, you know, our, also our PD, but especially our community members that have stepped up to participate in this entire process. You know, they're also creating a number of opportunities for members of the community to participate and to lend their voice. And, you know, what I will say to those that are attacking members of the, of the city is to, is to tell you that you're directing your anger and frustration to the wrong people. If you really have a number of issues with how we're, you know, having this process, I invite you to come to me. I invite you to talk to me. Yes, we did have a meeting. We, we discussed how we would proceed with our, our work moving forward. It was a very complicated issue. You know, I did vote to, to not have the meetings in real time and we had a discussion about the chat today. You know, I've been talking to members of the community. I feel differently today, but that's on me. That's a failure of my leadership. That is not a reflection of our city staff or, or anybody else. That's on me. And so how I move forward, I, I will do my best to, to address and rectify the issue. But it has been a very complicated process as you've seen. But once again, just my thanks to the entire community and the city staff for allowing us to have this process. And I really look forward and have faith that we will come up with something that the community will, will be great, will, will appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you, Paco. Thank you. Mr. Lowell Hurst, Councilman.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem Parker. You're doing a great job there and that's what the Mayor Pro Tem is supposed to do, is a great job. I wanted to apologize or say I was sorry to the council and the public and all the constituents for missing the last meeting. I missed a couple of other appointments as well. Had some family commitments that couldn't be postponed. And, and, you know, we should always try and focus on family as we're trying to focus on our municipal obligations and duties as well. Now that COVID is easing, you know, we're, we're seeing a lot of traffic pick up. And of course, there's a number of speeders and, you know, loud mufflers and reckless driving in the community. And I'm just asking for a little more police enforcement on those issues. And as previous speakers have said, you know, the, the easing up of traffic or has not really occurred on the freeway that much. And in fact, it's building back up. And I was at the RTC meeting two weeks ago and saw the, the kind of old draw that took place in the final vote. Now, the RTC has a business plan and they've spent a lot of money and they've got a lot of endorsement on that business plan. I would just ask that we support that business plan and, and move forward and assist them and, and getting that, getting the support that they need in the community. It's really about equity and, and social and economic justice for our Watsonville citizens so that they, they have a little more resources and access to transportation. And so while we're cleaning up the sloughs and everything else, let's, let's see what we can do to clean up transportation and that means support of the RTC. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Hurst. Councilman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And you are doing an awesome job. Can't be ran any better. I want to go first, start off with Papa Valley Unified School District. There is a, the Al Cap input is happening. This is very important. This is how they fund the arts and other programs for our youth. And so we want to ensure that we get our, our voices heard. So tomorrow, April 26, at 5, at 6, there will be the, you can go on Zoom to P O V S U do Zoom Al Cap meeting. And May 4th at 5:30, you can also give your input. And it's important that we get that to the community. I want to touch quickly on the RTC. I am the Chair of the Regional Transportation Commission currently. And, you know, it was disheartening the way the votes went down. But obviously, at the same time, it was the, the line that has been drawn for many years in this county. When we talk about equitability for transportation, I look at it for the whole county. Obviously also for my county. But I want to remind council that we did pass that resolution, 112-20. And I hope that we continue to support our rail and trail program. But mainly, you know, this is about the rail, right? The trail is where it's feasible can be installed. It's going to be feasibly installed. But this is about looking into the future, looking into the green. We have a climate change that's hitting us hard. And if we don't start doing something within our county to address that even more, it's just going, we're not going to help out and it's time for us to step up. But as far as the votes go on the RTC, we need to change the, the mindset of the North County folks because obviously their idea, it's, it doesn't matter. I'm in, I'm in the North Side and I got what I want and we need to move on. And that's this misfortune about this commission right now. They're really not thinking about the whole entity, just about their area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Garcia. Councilwoman Garcia, can you hear me? Okay, she can't hear me. So I'm going to move to Councilman Montesino. And let's communicate with Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening, everyone. I just really appreciate everyone that's participating. But I also want to touch on, you know, the RTC business plan. You know, I'm the representative for the, for the city. So I really want to appreciate all those efforts, but we got to get it across to finish finding and get it, or get our support out there for the business plan to move forward in our community. It is about equity and hopefully we can get past, past this hurt on the next meeting. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Garcia, are you able to hear now? No? Okay, all right. I'll just make my last comment. I want to thank everybody for their support of, of all the wonderful new businesses that are trying to up and run here in the city. I'm going to go back to Staff of Life because I've been shopping there three or four times now. And every time I get something different, I explore a little different area and I talk to them. And accordingly, they're, they're trying to get to know us better, too. So as we all come in and we know what we like and what we don't like, please be communicative to them. They, they really want to respond to that in the community. I'd like to say over here, you know, on the east side of Watsonville, come on over and get coffee and flowers and sushi, all sorts of great things are happening. You can get life insurance, you can get car insurance and, and many other things. Burgers, send things to UPS and FedEx. There's just so many things now that we can get out. We still wearing our masks outside, but we can get out and we can do for the economy of, of Watsonville. And I want to thank, I want to thank our, our staff. And when I say that, I mean, our city manager, our assistant city manager, Tamara. I really want to thank you for your leadership in the last few months. It's been really tough and things have been coming out of left field and right field. And that's pretty much what happens in a city. But I want to thank you for your leadership, your calm focus, your good communication and moving forward. It's much appreciated. Are you waving? I was looking at Councilwoman Garcia. So I'm going to end with a thank you to everyone. And if we can, we'll get Councilwoman Garcia's comments in a little bit later. And I guess we'll move on. She can hear us, but we can't hear her. To a report out of closed session, City Attorney Alan Smith.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The council considered two items on tonight's closed session agenda. Two A and two B labor negotiations and two items of existing litigation. Took reports from staff, gave no direction, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Alan. Rebecca, can you hear us? I heard you for a moment when you said I did that.
Okay. Erin just called me and told me what to do, so I can hear you.
Okay, so good. We're, we're able to have your, your comments now for the council.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, so good, good afternoon, everybody. I first will just list all the virtual, virtual meetings I attended and then I'm going to report on just one. I attended the Second Harvest Strategic Planning Interview. I, there is two Cabrillo College name explorations. I enjoyed a Parra Valley Arts Gallery poetry reading. There was a mayor's White House climate meeting, a community health trust meeting, and a four Cabrillo College interviews for Vice President of Instruction. And I also attended the New Mercado at Ramsey Park and the baked potato was delicious. I want to report on the League of Cities Latino Caucus webinar on redistricting. I learned that through legislation, there's a new process for redistricting. Part of what is being required is that two public hearings are required before a redistricting map, map is drawn and two public hearings must occur after a map is drawn. The city must have a redistricting webpage where residents can get information and give comments. A final redistricting plan must be approved by December 15th. If there's going to be an election in June 2022 or by April 17th, if the election is after July 2022. I'm sure we're going to learn more about redistricting on tonight's presentation. And that concludes my report. And I'm so glad I can hear you again.
There you go. Thank you, Councilwoman Garcia. I appreciate that. So we're going to move on to 6D in our agenda. And I think there's probably a video on it, but I'm going to speak to it just for a moment. Proclamation recognizing Matt Agucci and Body Zone Health and Fitness to Matt. Whereas Matt Agucci, owner of Body Zone Health and Fitness Club, is a third generation lifelong resident of Watsonville. Matt has been a part of the Body Zone family for nearly 20 years. And he has run a great team of seasoned employees who have been here for over a decade. Matt and the rest of the Body Zone team strive to create an inviting atmosphere and have many long-term customers, some whose families have grown, others who have left to college and returned, and those who have started their own business here. So I know that we, do we have a video for this?
I believe so.
Okay. Because I don't have access to that.
It's coming.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to this evening's city council meeting. I have the honor and the pleasure to be giving a mayor's proclamation to Body Zone Health and Fitness Club. The owner, Matt Agucci, he's a lifetime resident of our community. He's third generation. And we're so privileged to have somebody like Matt in our community pushing and we're so privileged to have somebody like Matt in our community pushing our health and well-being of our community forward. Matt has also been a part of the Body Zone family for nearly 20 years, first as a member, then as an employee since 2012. He has been the owner. And whereas Body Zone is always willing to lend a hand, including hosting fundraisers for family members of clients donating to local schools and holding fitness events for youth. And whereas Matt appreciates the opportunity to give back to the community that has supported Body Zone for the last two decades. On behalf of the entire city council, recognize Matt Aguchi and the entire Body Zone Health and Fitness Club team for their commitment to providing a family environment where all feel welcome and safe while exercising. So congratulations, Matt.
Thank you very much, Jimmy.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I want to start by thanking you. You've, you've served this community for many, many years, and I commend you for the job that you've done for our youth and our community. You're an educator as well, so thank you very much for that. You know, this, this, this isn't possible without the team that stands beside me at the Body Zone. As the mayor mentioned, you know, I have some employees that have been at the gym, you know, longer than I've been there. You know, I think we've created a family environment over there, not just for our employees, but for our members as well. And so that's something that we're all proud of. Two more people I want to give special thanks to, your predecessor, Paco Estada. He was very instrumental during the whole COVID shutdown. To Paco, thank you very much. And also to the staff at Santa Cruz County Bank, specifically their client service manager, Luis Falcone, who helped me with the PPP loan. I couldn't be more thankful for, for all those who have been with me during this, during this time. So Jimmy, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Looking forward to many, many more years of you and our community and getting our community healthy, especially our youth.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. That's very nice. Is Matt in the audience? Just out of curiosity. And do any of the other council members want to make a comment before we move on? Paco, and then Councilman Hurst.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. You know, I, Matt and his wife Suzanne are really just amazing human beings, you know? I've known them for, for a number of years. I met them when they were both members of Body Zone. And, you know, I consider them to be friends, and they definitely represent some of the best parts of this community. And, you know, I'm just happy that, you know, they're still here, they're still serving the community, and they're still serving the, the health needs of our many members. And so thank you for all that you do. I hope that you're, you're here in the community for many, many, many years, and we really just, you know, we love you guys, so thank you for all that you do. And, you know, I want to thank the mayor, who's not here, for, for recognizing you, but, you know, thank you for all that you do, and, and, yeah.
Thank you. Councilman Hurst?
Yeah, I wanted to thank Mr. Matt Aguchi for his service to the community. I'm not a member, so I don't have any conflict of interest or any perks involved in this, but I do go walk by there occasionally. I'm in Watsonville Square quite a bit, and I walk the slough, and I, and I see the, they moved the exercise equipment outdoors, and it was, it was going strong. And so I appreciate the, the award here this evening for a great physical fitness program in our community that really is popular and keeps everybody going strong. Keep up the good work, okay?
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll take one moment to make a quick comment. Body Zone was my fitness club of choice in the, in the pre-pandemic days. But you know what was great about it? It was not only all the classes, but the diversity of age when you went there, you know? Moss and Marsha Hashimoto were, were regulars that I saw there, along with a lot of other retired teachers. And certainly, you know, Matt and his wife and his mother-in-law, we've known for so long, and, and it's just great to see that people are sticking around Watsonville and we're making things happen still. So thank you, Matt, and thank you, you're right, mayor, for, for nominating them in the proclamation. So we'll move on to our next proclamation, recognizing May 2021 as a Building Safety Month. I'd like to read a little bit about it, and then I may call upon someone in our audience if he's here, to, if he has any comments. So whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council as a way of reminding others about the critical role of code officials who champion safe, sustainable, energy-efficient, and livable buildings essential to our prosperity. The theme for this year, Prevent, Prepare, Protect Building Codes Save, encourages everyone to raise awareness around the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, energy conservation, water safety, training the next generation, and new technologies. And whereas the city of Watsonville recognizes the key role, the safety and economic value of our home, constructions and infrastructure play in our growth, and whereas our confidence and the resilience of the buildings making up our community is achieved through the devotion of building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, laborers, and others in the industry who work to ensure the safe construction of said structures. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, we've had a few around here, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. So this month brings an opportunity for us all to consider a commitment to improve building safety and to acknowledge the essential services provided by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies. And I believe, do we have our chief building official, Rob Allen? Is he here?
He is here, yes.
And would he be available to speak a few words? Just a few words, Rob. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. From the other building inspectors and myself, thank you, Honorable Mayor Protem and council members for acknowledging Building Safety Month with this proclamation. We like to promote Building Safety Month every year in the month of May, and it's important for our community and our, and our members of the community to make sure that everyone stays safe. So again, thank you for the proclamation and the acknowledgement, and we'll do our very best under the conditions of still being COVID-related to get the word out. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate that. With that, the, no action required on our next item, but I will turn it over to a presentation on budget forecast by Administrative Services Director Cindy Surwin. Surwin? I want to make sure I got your name right.
Good, everyone. Hello again. Hear from me a lot. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Everybody see me? Is my screen?
Yep.
All right, good. So tonight, I'm giving you a budget outlook. This is the forecast that we're going to be using to base our budgets to help you and Matt when you are making decisions about what to put into your proposed budget. So this is not at all programmatic recommendations or anything right now. This is me sharing with you our sort of budget, our budget forecast. So just a little, a bit of a reminder of where we were. So when we adopted the budget last year, right, about a year ago, we were in the middle of chaos, and what we had projected was a short of sharp decline and deficits going out into the future. And frankly, even before the recession, Watsonville was in sort of a structural deficit place. We were looking at structural deficits for a long time into the future. We have talked several times this year about how our revenues, you know, the disaster never really struck us in the revenue front in the same way that we had projected, and that a lot of that money coming back up is what I keep calling filling in the dip, and it's going to wind up being one-time money. But the curve is also moving up, and so what I'm talking about today is how much that curve has moved up to give us our ongoing capacity, so that gap between the red and the blue line. So based on my latest forecasts of projections, this is now what our five-year forecast looks like, and I'm going to go through all my sort of assumptions, so you get an understanding of where this is coming from. And you can see right now, what we're projecting is a revenue above our projected expenses. So right now, we're showing I have a operating capacity of about 1.3 million going into our budget cycle for the first year, and 1.6 million going into the second year, and then that's growing each of the years out. And I'm going to go through, of course, the assumptions going into this, so you understand. But so this is these, these first two, the 1.3 million and the 1.6, that's the capacity that we have to add things back to our budget from last year's budget on the operating side. So the revenue assumptions that I am making on property tax and sales tax, this is in consultant, in consultation with our property, with our tax consultants, who really analyze these trends around the state and help us analyze all of our numbers. So the assumption column that I'm putting out there on the right-hand side is actually the, from what we're projecting to end this current year to the budget year. So we're anticipating 3.6% growth in property tax, about 2.6% in sales tax, I'll go into sales tax a little bit more, utility tax, a 3% growth, hotel tax, I'm assuming actually all the way back to the same as our FY19 levels. Transfers in are basically driven by property tax, again, based on, that's our special, the bulk of our transfers in is actually the special property tax that goes to, that we have for retirement costs, and then other revenues are growing by about 2%. And that is, what goes into other revenues is pretty much a lot of our land-based lease type revenues, and so those, most of those contracts are, are by CPI. CPI is low this year. To talk about property tax for one second, that is, it's a little bit less than historical growth, but as you know, about half of our property tax growth each year is based on that Prop 13 2% maximum limit, which next year is actually only going to be 1.3%. So because CPI, year-over-year CPI was low because of the recession. So that property tax growth is actually a fairly aggressive proposal. It, it, it means that we're sort of assuming that new sales and the rise in prices is going to help offset the decrease that we're getting in CPI. These revenue assumptions in general, I would say, are a little bit more aggressive than I normally would have. I think we talked about at our strategic planning session, the idea of taking risks and being a little bit more aggressive, and we have been in our, in our revenue assumptions, and so that is definitely reflected in, in these. So going into department-level revenues for CDD, I'm assuming they're going to go to their three-year average inflated by CPI. And then police and parks is another place where I'm being fairly aggressive in my, in my revenue assumptions. I'm assuming they're going to get restored back to their pre-recession levels, so back to fiscal year 19. And what is, what I'm assuming is, is that if they don't, I'll be able to use American Rescue Plan money to backfill those costs. I still don't have any guidance on the American Rescue Plan from the Treasury. Myself and every CFO in the country is eagerly awaiting more information. But again, in, in, in full disclosure, and in the idea of trying to be just a little aggressive to right-size our budget, I'm assuming that what the departments are able, not able to make up programmatically, will be able to backfill with American Rescue Plan information. So that, in a nutshell, is some of the overarching revenue assumptions. I want to drive into sales tax a little bit, as we keep always going into them, because that seems to be our, our most wild revenue source. So this is, we just got, like, literally a week ago, new sales tax information for quarter four, and as you can see, state and county pools, online sales, and auto and transportation keeps going up. The auto and transportation number is, you know, wildly larger than we have seen in years, and it definitely makes me a little nervous, because it seems like it could be a volatile revenue source. And if that drops significantly, it will also drop our share of the pools. So these are the projections by category that our sales tax consultants have put together. And again, I feel like they're, they're a little bit on the aggressive side. They're definitely not what I would consider a conservative revenue projection. You can see that they are assuming some amount of leveling off of autos and transportation, that it will decline by 4.9% from this year, from the year that we're in. Also, that building and construction will go down a little bit. But they're also assuming, as you can see, on fuel and service stations and restaurants and hotels, so basically, full recovery, basically getting back to where we were pre-pandemic, which to me, again, feels a little bit aggressive, but they're also expecting, and we've been talking about, some amount of a spending surge once the economy opens back up. So just to reiterate, some of the risks that I feel are in this revenue projection is that we're assuming property tax, that volume and the new price of the sales makes up for the low CPI. Sales taxes, assuming auto sales stay at historically high levels and full recovery of restaurants and hotels. We're assuming full recovery on hotel tax, our own hotel tax, and we're assuming full recovery for parks and police, and if it's not fully made up programmatically, that we'll be able to make up, use American Rescue Plan money for that. On the expenditure side, I've again put in my, these are sort of our baseline projections. So what this does is it takes last year's budget as our starting point, and then I put various inflators on that. So this is like assuming a status quo as last year is the starting point. And what I've assumed on here, the only increases I've really assumed are on CalPERS, which we have to pay based on their actuarial analysis and the normal cost. But you'll notice that that salary line really doesn't change as you keep going across, it's very minimal changes. And that is because I'm not assuming any changes to open contracts. The only thing that I'm assuming in those salary lines right now is on contracts that are already closed. So we do have a couple of contracts that are, are closed for the next fiscal year. So that's really the only change. Often, when I do a five-year projection, I'll include sort of an inflator on there just to give a more accurate picture. Right now, I'm leaving that as zero, because I really want the council to see and understand how much money they actually have to work with as they make decisions and give direction to staff as they go into bargaining and budgeting. So that means that salary and other benefits, and they don't change that much. We assume a 5% inflator on health services. We've been lucky in the last few years to not have that happen, which often leads us to a little savings, but I am not optimistic that we can keep that trend going forever. Utilities and travel, we are assuming 3% on PG&E, and then we are also assuming the proposed rate study from Public Works on the other utilities on water sewer and solid waste. And then on contracts and supplies, materials and supplies, and kind of all the other, as you can see, kind of smaller expenditure lines, we're just assuming a 2% growth mimicking CPI. And then finally, on the proposed capital, I'm assuming basically for the proposed capital plan, so $750,000 in sort of maintenance capital for fiscal year '22, and then ramping that up to something closer than, as a million dollars each year. Again, all of those revenues together mean that we have operating capacity of 1.3 million in the first year and 1.6 million in the second year. There's a lot of competing interest for that 1.3 million. I think, you know, it sounds like a big number, but it will actually go pretty quick. So one of the things, again, to remember is that last year from our general fund budget, we cut $4.3 million worth of expenses. So having 1.3 million of capacity means that we are only adding, we can only add at maximum about one-third of what we had cut back, right? And I think that's, that's a shocking thing to realize, like, we can only restore about a third of what we cut. And that's not, you know, saying that if we wanted to add new programs, right? If we wanted to add new types of programs and new types of services, that means our restoration drops even lower from that. So I think that's, that's a really important thing for everybody in the public to understand. The average cost of a citywide position to add a position back to The average cost of a citywide position to add a position back to our budget is $124,000 when it's fully benefited. We know there's been a lot of desire from our community and from the council to grow our Parks and Recreation Department. The average cost of a Parks and, Parks employee is, is about $100,000. We also know that we are in bargaining or going into bargaining for a number of our bargaining groups, including our fire department. 1% for all open contracts is $147,000. That's just a 1%. And of course, if you have 1% each year or some variation of that, that, that is compounding going into the future. So again, you can see that 1.3 million, while it sounds very exciting, and it is exciting, it, it still means that we have to be very strategic in how we choose to add things back to our budget. The other area where I think we need to be cautious is that we do have a lot of one-time opportunities coming at us. And we have struggled in the past with staffing and the ability to actually move those projects. So one of the things, if we want the one-time side of the house to work, we also need to add some staffing capacity to be able to get those projects out the door. So talking about our one-time side, we've seen this chart before. This is Watsonville's fund balance for the last 15 years. And it was in a very, very scary place up until the last couple of fiscal years. But now the last couple of fiscal years, we're at this place where we are, we ended fiscal year 20 at about 35%, a little over 35%, which means we have quite a bit of reserves and one-time money available. So that gap between what we are required to maintain per policy of 20% and what we actually have right now is about $7.6 million. So we have $7.6 million in one-time capacity on the general fund, which again is very exciting. Again, it never goes, goes quite as far as we would like it to go. So I put on this slide to just point out again, sort of the cost of some of the capital projects that people are very interested in. For example, the Ramsey soccer fields alone are estimated to be $4.3 million. I put on here Peace Park, it's a park my children go to. Replacing that playground structure alone would be $575,000. And we have a number of small-sized parks around the city who are in need of updates and repairs to their park structures. So again, I put this on here to show, you know, it's very exciting to have $7.6 million in one-time money available. But again, it will go pretty quickly. The American Rescue Plan, I'm putting this slide here. I'm not going to talk about it. This is the same slide actually had the last time I spoke with you, because nothing has changed since the last time I talked to you. I still have gotten no guidance. Like I said, me and every CFO in the country is still waiting for the, for the Department of Treasury to actually tell us how we can use the funds. So I think at this point, what is going to happen is we're going to wind up having to come back to you with a supplementary budget, once we fully understand what's allowable. And once we're able to coordinate with all of our other county partners and the nonprofits and, and all the other people who are getting money in our area, and we kind of figure out how we're going to coordinate those funds. I think we're going to have to come back to you with a plan for how to spend that $18.8 million that Watsonville is going to get you. We just don't have enough information or time to have that coincide with our normal to your budget process. So the big takeaways is that I think what is really exciting is because we're in a place where we're adding back and not cutting, we have an opportunity to become structurally balanced. And as a finance director, that is really exciting. I've never worked for a city that's been in structural balance. So I think as long as we make very strategic and smart decisions, hopefully, we won't be in sort of crisis mode as we have been for a long time. We can be structurally balanced going into the future. Again, we have a very exciting opportunity to tackle some big one-time capital projects, which I will be taking the capital proposal to the Planning Commission on May 4th. But again, you know, those are, we have great opportunities, but we also have limitations. There's far more demand than there is capacity. We will not be able to restore everything that we reduced. And again, there's going to be a separate process for planning and budgeting of the American Rescue Plan money, once we have more information. The next steps, I go into hiding right now, and I actually try to put together a balanced budget based on your feedback and work from the department heads. That budget will be submitted to you on May 30th and to the public. And then we go into hearing those. So in June, we have two budget hearings. And then again, later in the summer, hopefully, we'll be able to come back to you with a plan for the American Rescue Plan money. With that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for reducing your, your display there. Okay, so Rebecca?
That was great news, Cindy. So thank you. Can you, well, we're not back in your, in your PowerPoint anymore. But in terms of your sale tax screen, on there, I saw that in terms of administrative cost, the second column had 77, 658, which was a lot less than all the other three columns, and I wondered why.
I'm looking for that slide right now. So the, the administrative cost is actually from CD TFA, is the state administrative cost. No, it's actually, if I share my screen again, you'll see it's actually quite consistent. It's about $80,000 each, each fiscal year that the CD TFA takes to administer the sales tax program. Do you want me to show this again, Rebecca?
Yeah, because when I originally saw it, I wrote down 77, 658 for the second column, because that's what I saw.
Let me, let me show you. I think I may have gone, just gone really fast. So you can see it's that red.
Yeah, and it said the second column has 77, 658.
77,000, and then the next year is 20, is 80, is back up to 83,000.
And so I wondered why it went down that second column.
You know, I don't know, honestly, these are estimates from the sales tax administrator and from the council. And they're, again, they're not final numbers, so we'll also have to see what the CD TFA actually finally charges us at the very end of the year. I mean, to me, it's in the ballpark. To me, it, it's, you know, a $5,000 difference, which in the scheme of things is, is not what I would consider significant. But if you would like, I can, I can ask for more information about why there's that, that about $5,000 difference.
And I, I appreciate it, because if we can have it be down $5,000 every year from then on, it would save us $15,000.
Okay, I will, I will ask them what's that based on.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or clarifications from the council? All right, thank you very much, Cindy. Oh, Paco, Councilman Estrada.
I was pressing a little button, it's her hand. But I appreciate that you, for the opportunity, for just one question, Cindy. First off, I wanted to thank you for all the community workshops that you, that you hosted. I, I, you know, it really did mean a lot to, I think, the whole council that you took the time to do that and to, you know, lend yourself to the community to be able to explain some things and answer some questions. And just, I just wanted to get your, your thoughts on the whole process and any good insights that you got from the community or things that you heard over and over that you thought were just interesting to hear.
Well, I think I, I was disappointed in the, the community participation, both at the Budget 101 and the Town Hall. Though we did have some good participation on the online survey that we, we had opened for about a month there. And I'll include in my, my final budget report, all of that, that survey results from you. And I think what we heard, what I've heard at all of those forums is similar to what we've been hearing for a while. And what I think, you know, we're all, we all know that the community is asking for, which is really an enhancement to Parks and Recreation. Yeah, that, and then downtown beautification and an investment in our downtown and watching and wanting to see some economic development in our downtown. So those were two very strong results in, in both the, the survey and in the forums, and very consistent.
As I speak and I'm not heard, hey, is there anybody else on council? Has any other questions or clarifications for Cindy? Nope, we're good. I thank you, Cindy. That was illuminating and positive and a little scary, but that's, that's what it's all about, right?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see, we're going to move to the consent agenda. I'd like to ask the council if there's any commentary that you, you would like, any of them that you'd like to comment on? Or if you'd like to pull an item before we move on to public input. And that being so, we're going to move on to public input then on our consent agenda. And are there any speakers?
Yes, we have one. Go ahead, Ellie.
So it's interesting to see that parks isn't just the least funded, but the least paid. Paco, I'm not attacking anyone. That language is harmful, especially towards women of color. You should be looking at the consent, please pause my time if you're going to speak over me, right?
Pause your time, Ellie.
Thank you. I invite you to look into the power of language and how criminalized
Tamara, would you stop it for a moment?
Looking at my, looking
And cut the microphone, thank you. So we'll pause your time. So let's, let's stay focused. I want to repeat this, time is set aside for public to comment on the consent agenda. And, and if you would, stay focused on, on the subject again. That's great. Thank you. And you'll have your full time, Ellie. Thank you.
It's that he directed comments at me, which is why I
Thank you, Ellie. Go ahead.
So looking at this consent agenda, it's no wonder y'all don't care about gentrification or affordable housing. Y'all make so much more than the rest of the community, except police, of course. So it's no wonder that y'all don't care about what poor people have to say. I lose a lot of time coming here too, but I can look at the consent agenda that city staff gets paid a real good amount for being here and doing their job. I lose my time and I don't get paid to do it. So you're using excuses and upholding white supremacy through respectability politics. And it's shameful to see. But yeah, I'm just looking at the amount of that y'all get paid to do the very least. And y'all should be embarrassed, right? That you do the absolute least and you get paid way more, or twice as much than the average of the people that live in this community. And then you use that money to push your own personal, personal gain and personal agenda, right? So when I look at these numbers and I'm looking at someone getting paid as much as $60 an hour, I'm like, well, no, dang, they're, they're sitting pretty cushy in their homes in Watsonville. No wonder they don't care about what I have to say, right? No wonder I keep getting muted and I only have two minutes to express myself, even though Paco continuously disrespects me. I have to stay on subject. Let me continue. More, more than anything, it just looks like what city staff has been doing kind of shows based on their pockets and what they're getting paid, that the clear divide isn't just in age, but also in money. And it's clear that city staff is on that high end of that, right? So no wonder they want to beautify economic growth by pushing out all the brown, poor people, because y'all sitting so cushy on that little salary y'all guys make, right? Paco, you should be
Thank you, LA, very much. And thank you, Tamara. Do we have any other callers or speakers?
No, Mayor Bratton, that was our last speaker for this item.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Who was on moving? Rebecca, okay, so moved by Councilwoman Garcia, seconded by Councilman Gonzalez. Now, clerk?
I, I have a question or a comment.
Okay, let's do that.
Yeah, and this is regard to items I and J. Both the new fire management group and the police management groups come from the current management organization. And so I'm wondering, with those exiting and creating their own group, who remains on, in management?
That's a clarification question.
Councilmember Garcia, Deputy City Manager Manning is coming on, she can respond to that.
Good evening. So our management group consists of a wide variety of classifications. We have our assistant directors in there, we have our planners, we have our admin analysts, our senior admin analysts, our HR analysts. So there are a wide, there's about 45 people in the management group.
Okay, okay. I know, I was just wondering to what extent those exiting and creating their own group would have, what impact they would have on that. But it sounds like it's still a strong organization.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez, you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I just want to make a real quick comment here. You know, some of these salaries adjustments that we're doing for some of the positions within our city, some of our employees are actually earning below what's out there in the industry. So we're trying to make adjustments, so there, it's been, to bring them up closer to, to par, right? To what exists out there in other communities that are actually paying and giving better, more, more benefits, right? And so just to clarify that, that some of these are adjustments that we're trying to make for employees, so they can actually continue to, to live and participate in our community.
I thank you. Councilman Hurst?
Yes, I would also second that in that, you know, it's, it's very difficult to recruit and retain staff when your salaries aren't competitive. And so I think it's important that we be competitive. And we're never going to be at the top of our list, nor do we need to be. But we don't want to be at the bottom either. And so, you know, there, there, the budget's always kind of a, a piece of guesswork. And sometimes emergencies come along, and sometimes they're even state and county-induced emergencies. And we have to give back money as we have in the past. You know, folks forget about the redevelopment and the, all the takeaways that cost the city a great harm and, and put us into a hole for a long, long time. And so finally, now we're, we're turning the corner. And I want to thank staff, all staff, for their sacrifices. And it's time that everybody be made whole at least a little bit. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And with that, could we go to roll call vote?
Estrada?
Hi.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gonzalez? Hurst?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. All right, so we're moving on to item 10, new business. And this is our 10A is a proposed process for redistricting. And I will be turning this over to Madam City Clerk to, I guess, present or discuss.
Yes, I would like to introduce Attorney Tom Willis. He's with Remshaw. He is, the council approved the contract in February, I believe. And so he'll be doing the presentation for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thanks. Beatrice, I'm having problems with getting, pulling on my PowerPoint. So just bear with me for one second. Good evening, council members. My name is Tom Willis. I'm with the law firm of Remshaw, Johansson, Olson-Remshaw. And we have, my firm and I have over 20 years of providing advice to, to city councils, the state, with respect to redistricting. And we are honored that we've been chosen by the city to provide advice on redistricting and help you with this process. It's our policy and what we would like to do is to make sure that this process is open, that it receives maximum public input from the community, that it is viewed as fair, that the districts are understood by all within the public and the city council members at the end of this process, and that it is considered to be a fair process. And I'm so sorry, my, I'm for some reason having problems with my, getting my, my PowerPoint up, and I'm so sorry about uh, my uh PowerPoint up and I'm so sorry about that.
We have the PowerPoint if you want us to share it.
You mind doing that for me? Um, yes, that's great. Thank you so much. Uh, you can go to the next slide. Thank you. So I want to cover a few things tonight, uh, the the overall timing and what you can expect in the next year essentially, uh, with redistricting, bring you up to date on what's happening with the census. You may have heard just yesterday, the census um sent out reapportionment numbers to the states. Those are just the whole numbers of population within each state for the purposes of assigning congressional districts. So we still do not have uh specific data with respect to the city population yet. That's going to come later and I'll talk about that process. Uh, but I also want to talk about the the public participation requirements, the legal criteria that are involved in the process and then uh end up speaking a little bit about a proposed schedule, given all these requirements. And then I believe the city council has a motion before it regarding how to proceed with respect to an advisory commission and moving on from there. And obviously would be happy to entertain any questions that you may have about the process. Um, so moving on to the next slide. Uh, redistricting, as as probably all of you know, is the process of simply redrawn the seven city council districts uh every decade after the census to do two basic things. The first is to make sure that under the new census data that we are going to get, that all of the districts are of relatively equal population. And we will talk a little bit about what equal population actually means in this context in a second. And then the second thing is, once you equalize population, you want to make sure that all of these districts comply with the federal and state laws uh with respect to redistricting. And we'll talk about those laws. So it's basically, that's that's the the thing that the city council will be asked to do. Redraw the districts according to the twenty twenty census and then make sure that all of the laws are complied with and that the public as a whole has confidence that communities of interest are being uh brought together in districts and that all of the federal and state laws are complied with. Um, as you may recall, your your process in twenty eleven, uh, the city council decided to have an advisory commission to uh help assist bring in public input and also work with demographer and I think they uh the city's um tech uh G uh tech group uh to draw a map. And then under an advisory committee process, uh, the committee can make a recommendation to the city, but the city ultimately decides, the city council ultimately decides which plan to adopt. And as my understanding from two thousand and eleven, the city council adopted a different plan that was then was recommended by the advisory committee. That process, if you don't mind going to the next slide. That process is still available to the commission, to the to the council and you'll have a motion tonight to discuss that. You could have an advisory committee um like you did in two thousand and eleven. And again, that committee could uh receive public input. Um, and uh, you know, have hold workshops and receive a variety of public input with respect to communities of interest and and other information. Uh, make a recommendate, make a recommendation to city council. But under your charter, uh, section four one three, the city council must ultimately be the final decision maker. So just like last time, you ultimately have the authority to change the recommendation, adopt it or start fresh with a new map. The one big change, uh, and I think one council member mentioned this. Uh, the one big change from last cycle is uh in two in twenty nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, the state uh under the new Attorney General Bonta passed um the Fair Maps Act, which is really makes quite a big change in the way local jurisdictions must redistrict. Um, it's an interesting law though, because in some cases it um preempts your local law and in other cases it doesn't. So uh, the presentation tonight is meant to show you what the actual process will be for Watsonville. And that means that it's kind of a a mix of what what we did is we followed local your charter provisions when the state says we could do that. And we're following state law when the state law tells us we have to follow that law. Um, if you don't mind going to the to the next slide, thank you. We'll get into the a little bit about what the Fair Maps Act requires uh when we talk about the timing and the criteria. But just to bring you up to date on what is happening with the census, you probably have heard quite a lot in the last year about census delay because of COVID uh and because of the uh Trump administration had difficulties with the process. Um, and there was a lot of uh back and forth. We heard at one point there was going to be a long delay, then they changed their mind. And and ultimately though, there has been a significant delay in the census release to the states. Usually every um other after the census um is taken in the in the turn of the decade. Uh, the census is usually released to the states by no later than March thirty first. Now it will be released uh September thirtieth. However, the uh census has recently given us some uh good news, which is that they are going to release uh the data, the exact same data that they're going to release in September thirtieth, uh, but in a little bit more technical format on August sixteenth. And they've just kind of firm that data up saying that they will release that uh data no later than August sixteenth. And our statewide database, which is is terrific, they have already indicated that they will be able, they have the technical wherewithal to use that more technical format and create the statewide database in about five weeks. So that's a long-winded way of saying, we're not going to get the census data until August sixteenth and local jurisdictions won't be able to get meaningful data that they you can start looking at districts until the very end of September likely. But that that deadline now looks pretty firm. So that's kind of where where we are, I think, as of the last couple of weeks. Now, obviously, the state um commission, redistricting commission is madly trying to uh redistrict at the same time because they have to get maps in uh ready for the June primary. So they have to be kind of done by the end of December, probably. So there's a mad dash at the state level, too. Your deadline is a little bit um less extreme than that, as we'll go over. Your deadline really essentially is it's under the charter provision, which says that you have, once that the statewide data is released, you have essentially six months to redistrict. So if you think about the data being released in August, that means probably you you'll have a deadline of the end of March. Um, if you don't mind moving it, thanks. So the Fair Maps Act, that's the new state law. It applies to all counties, cities, general cities, charter cities. Uh, however, it does, as I mentioned, give some charter cities some uh more latitude in uh in the criteria that they're using. And we'll talk about that in a second. But it the the biggest uh, the biggest change is it requires much more emphasis on public participation and really encourages and demands that local jurisdictions try to get uh more public participation, particularly in underrepresented communities. Uh, you know, limited English or no English communities. And we'll talk about those provisions in a second. But it does, again, as I mentioned, permit uh the advisory committee uh um kind of role that you've envisioned in two thousand and eleven. It permits that process again this time. This, under the Fair Maps Act, the uh city, so both the advisory committee and the city council have to have a total of four public hearings. Uh, two of those have to occur after maps are drawn. At least one has to occur before maps are drawn. So you may actually, because if you are considering advisory committee, you may actually have a couple more meetings, just because the advisory committee will need some more time to draw and make a recommendation. And likewise, you will likely need more public hearings to, you know, get your arms around what the advisory committee did and then uh decide whether you want to accept that or not. But so you, I don't think there's any question, you'll probably be a little bit over the minimum of four public hearings total. The uh, the the purpose of these hearings really is to encourage everyone from the public uh to come out and tell us about what their communities of interest are. What is a community of interest? That's the most important thing that we want to emphasize at every meeting and then every hearing. Tell us what community of interest is important to you. What does that mean? That really is up to the public to tell us. It could mean it's it's basically just any group of citizens, residents that have a common interest at heart. It could be a school district uh zone. It could be living near a park. It could be living near an airport. It could be um a neighborhood. Uh, we want to hear about those and we want to encourage uh the public to give us written comments and 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 testimony about why they think their community is important and why this this community should be held together in 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 a single district. Um, so the uh, the Fair Maps Act has three kind of basic requirements, aside from the the public hearing requirement. The first is it really requires cities to uh city to city to encourage uh all residents, as I said, to um to participate in the process by coming to hearings, to submitting uh testimony, to drafting maps if they want to, uh to um to to really participate in the process. And the Fair Maps Act requires the city to uh do a number of things, such as issue press releases, work with community groups uh to give them uh information that they can disseminate, to uh use social media outlets to encourage participation. And we'll be working with city staff um to uh to 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 have a a successful plan in that regard. The other uh, the other thing is the translation services are required upon request for uh certain uh language uh speakers. Um, and then finally, uh, there needs to be a dedicated website uh on the city's uh web website. And that needs to have some basic information, how to, you know, tell the public how to participate, what the process actually is, what does redistricting mean? It needs to have a calendar so everyone can see when these public hearings will be held. And then it has to have portals that permit the public, again, to submit either electronic or written comments um about um maps that they favor, um communities of interest that are important to them, et cetera. Finally, uh, there's a it's Fair Maps Act actually requires more notice, uh more notice requirements than the Brown Act. So uh for hearings, those have to be noticed five days in advance. And for the final public map, uh, it has to be posted on the internet for seven days before the council can can make a a final decision on that. So again, it's just the Fair Maps Act, if you just kind of go at the thirty thousand foot level, is trying to encourage public participation. Um, you know, everywhere it can. And so that's an important message uh that, um, you know, we all that we all want to get across um this cycle. Um, if you don't mind moving on. So now the the um criteria, legal criteria, this is kind of an interesting issue. Um, the uh, the the Fair Maps Act has a very specific list of criteria. But because your charter already has uh criteria, it it permits you to uh use your own criteria. With the exception being that kind of the, in terms of order of priority and preference. And again, this is when I'm talking about legal criteria, I'm talking about how do we judge whether a district, particular district or a map as a whole is legal, constitutional, meets all the requirements. There's kind of a group of laws uh that are the highest priority and those are the uh U S Constitution uh and the Federal Voting Rights Act. And um, the uh U S Constitution has two requirements. The first is equal population. That's where that equal population requirement comes from. That's from the Constitution. And that basically says that each um district has to be plus or minus total difference between the smallest, the least populated and most populated district, about ten percent variance. And even if you get really pretty close to ten percent, you need to kind of justify why you're doing that. The equal population standard is really one of the most important. It's about making sure that all of the districts start out in twenty twenty one as being the same size with respect to population, total population. The next is also a product of the United States Constitution. It's the fourteenth amendment and it uh says that all all persons must be treated equally. And the way that has been played out in redistricting is that it says race cannot be used as a predominant factor when you're deciding how to uh create districts. Race may be a factor and in fact, there is some uh it's it's difficult to conceptualize because the very next standard, the Voting Rights Act, uh, by definition requires in some some instances for you to 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 um to think about race in a predominant way. Uh, the Voting Rights Act, the section two of the Federal Voting Rights Act just says that plans cannot discriminate against racial or language minority groups. And that includes diluting uh voting power of any minority group. And so we need to make sure that the Voting Rights Act is adhered to, while at the same time, uh, not using race as a predominant factor. We'll get into a lot of details about that later, if that comes up, when we're actually drawing the maps. But it's a little bit of a uh a weird concept. On the one hand, the equal protection is saying, don't look to race. And then on the other, Voting Rights Act, sometimes you do have to look at race and ethnicity. Once you get past those constitutional requirements, you can now go back to your charter provision, which says um you should consider to the extent practical, practicable, uh, natural boundaries, street lines, city boundaries, uh geography, um cohesiveness, continuity, compactness. I wouldn't spend too much time about those. Just by definition, your districts are going to meet those standards. Um, and then finally, communities of interest. And communities of interest, like I said, over the last ten, twenty years, have really become the most important thing that I think in many ways uh that drives the process. Because again, you want public participation in telling uh from the public, telling telling us what's important, what communities are important, how they should stay together. Um, finally, uh, back to the Fair uh Maps Act. That does say that districts cannot favor or discriminate against any political party. However, that's not really going to be an issue here. We were not really going to be looking at political party data uh at all with respect to the redistricting here. Finally, uh, one final legal criteria is uh kind of incumbency and how incumbencies should be treated. The Fair Maps Act has a specific rule with respect to this and that governs in this particular case. Uh, there are two two basic rules. The first is that no incumbent's term can be cut short. And that's that's an important rule. And and I think it also is a little bit different than your charter provision. Um, so that will be maybe a change uh that is new for the city. The second is that um when you uh run, when the elections are run next in in November of twenty twenty two, you have to line up the district numbers with the uh council members who have those same numbers and who are up. So in other words, you just have to line the numbers with the um council members that are up. Uh, again, to make sure that you are uh making sure that uh no incumbent is um getting shortened. Their their term is not being shortened. Just want to talk briefly about it, the propose a proposed schedule. Obviously, this is subject to change depending on uh if the Census Bureau throws any more um wrenches into the system. Although I don't think that's going to happen, but you never know. And obviously, the city council has has the, will will be reviewing this and determining whether this this proposed schedule works. But I kind of uh for just first, you know, thinking this through and how this is going to affect the city. Um, you know, how this will first, this issue will first come up. And you know, basically from May until August, if the city council approves and uh in an advisory committee process, then we would take that time period to appoint advisory committee members, establish the committee and you know, organize the committee and provide them with uh redistricting uh information and the basics with redistricting, with respect to redistricting, the criteria, some of the things we've gone over tonight. And they could even hold a public hearing. You don't have to wait for the census data for a public hearing if you want to get um public information about um communities of interest, for example. And and also during this period over the summer, the city will begin its outreach efforts like we discussed that the Fair Map Act requires starting the social media outreach to communities and and the like. Then next one in the fall, I think, is when things will really start picking up. That's when we'll first of all get the census data. And then as soon as the census data comes out, I'm sure the the interest by both the advisory committee and and city council will become more, it'll it'll become more intense. And so in October, I would think that the advisory committee would start holding one or two of those public hearings and perhaps even start drafting maps. November, December, the advisory committee would continue to draft maps and then conclude hopefully by the end of December so that the council and make a recommendation to council so that maybe in January the council could come back and begin the process of determining whether to adopt a plan or to revise a plan. And so we're thinking again, if you have a deadline of the end of or sometime in March, that would give the city council, January, February, and some of March to again, look at the advisory committee's proposed plan, determine whether there were revisions to be made here, the public, get more public input and then come to a final conclusion on a plan in in March or or February. So that is that is, no, we ran really quickly through that and a lot of it is confusing because of how the Fair Maps Act works with the city charter. But I'm happy to answer any questions at all about that process. So please, please ask any questions. Thank you.
Are you muted, Ari? Ari, are you muted?
Yeah, at least once a day I like to do that to myself. See Rebecca, there we go. So I'll recognize Councilwoman Garcia and then Councilman Hurst.
Okay, first I want to disclose that I was the chair of the Redistricting Task Force in two thousand and eleven. And I do want to concur with Mr. Willis in terms of the city council adopted a map contrary to what the advisory committee submitted. The advisory committee by one vote decided on a on a however, when it went to the council, the council adopted the map that the attorney that had been hired had submitted. And so in the end, it was what the minority by one had proposed. So I just wanted to clarify that. And and in fact, what is being proposed now with new legislation in terms of community involvement to the extent that it must be involved is very different than it was in two thousand and eleven. I have three questions. My first question is, in the report that we received, it states that one public hearing is required before any map is drawn. However, as I earlier stated, in the League of Cities Latino Caucus Consult, the consultant stated that two public hearings are required before any map is drawn. Can you please clarify?
I think there, yeah, sure, absolutely. I think there is, under the way that the Fair Maps Act is written, you do not need to have, it basically just says one, at least one has to be before, at least two have to be after. So it gives a local jurisdiction some flexibility of how they want to, you know, put that that fourth hearing, if you will. They could do it before the the drawing or afterwards. But but as I mentioned, because if you do go the route of an advisory committee, you're going to probably have well, not well over, but two or three more than the minimum for sure.
Okay, thank you for that. Secondly, the consultant in the League of Cities Latino Caucus said that all hearings can be held by the advisory committee, but you say that two must be by the city council. Again, can you please clarify?
Yeah, the absolutely, really, the advisory committee can only hold one, two at most. Because at the end of the day, you have to have those two with two hearings that occur after the maps are drawn. And that has to be with the city council. So the Fair Maps Act is pretty clear that if you have an advisory committee, you can give them one, maybe two, but you can't give them any more than that.
Okay, thank you. And finally, you list six requirements for that webpage. And I'm just curious if though that list came from the Secretary of State template.
That's that's a very good question. And that's one thing I forgot to mention. As part of the Fair Maps Act, the Secretary of State is required to provide templates in all all affected languages. They have done that. What they have not done, so yes, we would be, obviously, we have, the city hasn't done that yet. But we take those templates, both they are are good templates about describing how redistricting works and how to participate. And so there is a great website. Well, it's it's getting good. They still need to put some more information on it. But it's if you just go to Secretary of State, and if you type in local redistricting, they have some of that information there and you'll see those templates right there. What they don't have is translation services and and some things have to be translated in in different languages and local jurisdictions are required to comply with that rule. The Secretary of State is the one that determines which languages and which jurisdictions have have to be, which that that requirement applies to. And they haven't done that yet because they're waiting for the census data.
Very good, thank you.
Member Garcia, we actually already got the templates for the website and started working on it and adapting it to the city. And if you go to our city council's website, we already have a draft there and are working on the Spanish one.
Wonderful. And I have three comments, but I'll wait until after we
Thank you.
Public
Commentary, yes, thank you. Councilman Hurst.
Well, as you've heard from Esquire Willis, this is important work and and it's a lot of hard work too, and we need a lot of public participation on this. Not all the public understand why they're in one district or another, especially when they're right across the street from a different district. And but this is a, this is an important process to make sure that everybody is equally represented. And that's the whole point of the law, I think. Well, it's got several points, but for the average person, they just want to be heard and they want to be represented. They want to know who their council members and is going to be and and how they can adequately participate. And so my question is, how do we do this process so that we actually bulletproof it from court challenges? Because we don't want to spend a lot of money in court on on all this, and we want to make sure that we get it right. And it may not make everybody happy all the time, but at least if we can stay out of court on it, we'll be much better off. How do we do that?
Well, we have to, that's my my responsibility in part to make sure that the final map, we we work very closely with the city to make sure that the final map complies with all of those provisions. And our firm has litigated those issues for a number of years and successfully defended many, many plans. And so that obligation falls to me, but it it also is honestly, I think you put the, you you really hit the nail on the head, which is those those challenges don't occur if people feel that the the product is fair and they understand it. And you know, sometimes it is a zero sum game in certain areas of of the city. But if people feel that they've been heard, if they feel like they participated and we're going to try to do everything we can to give everyone that opportunity. That goes a long way in in solving some of that.
Thank you, Mr. Willis.
All right, are there any other technical or clarifying questions before we go to the public? Okay, we'll go to the public now. And do we have any participators? And questions from the public?
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, Mr. Willis, I live in a senior community in District Seven. And our mayor pro temp is the council member in my district. And I'm wondering, will there be a good chance that the three senior communities in the southeastern corner of the city will be split up into various districts? Or will it remain, as I think it should, a community of similar interests? Thank you.
Well, you know, we haven't looked at any of that. That's what the public hearings are. Thank you for the comment. And I think that's what the I do you want me to respond to all public comment? Is that, just want to make sure I'm not and that's what you would like me to do? Is that? Okay, thanks. That, you know, that will come later at the public input hearings. And that's the exact kind of evidence and testimony that I think the Advisory Commission Committee and the city council will want to hear. These are three senior groups, senior neighborhoods together. They should be, they have a common coalition of voters. They should be treated the same. They should be all in one district. So we don't, we obviously, we don't have the numbers yet. We don't have the census data. We haven't even begun to look at that. All of that will be done publicly. So you haven't missed anything yet, but that's going to wait until I think, you know, September and October, November, when the census data comes out. And we can start looking at maps together. We'll have at both the advisory committee and city council, our demographer, who's who's excellent, Michael Wagaman, you'll meet him. He will have all of the maps up so we can see them in real time. You can adjust lines with him. He can throw up, you know, school district boundaries if there are, neighborhood boundaries. And you can see those. So it's 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 a very good process in that respect.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Steve. You know, that was my inexperience. Tom, you don't have to respond. This is for public input. We'll take notes on that information. Thank you for your clear. And I I know Steve appreciates the the complete answer. But you don't have to respond. And we'll take notes and move forward with with what the public has. Thank you so much. Do we have another speaker? Or?
Yes, go ahead, Ellie.
Okay, great.
So I've been looking into the redistricting and what that means. So Ari, I will be sending you an email. But since I am in your district, I would like to let you know right now. I did not feel safe being part of the ad hoc policing committee, which is why I took back my application and what I think other people should do. But I feel safe joining this one. So I'm going to send you an email because I'm very interested in the subject and I would really like to be part of this committee so that we can work together for our city. And I understand that Willis doesn't have to answer public comment. It is always appreciated when you guys make us feel like we're a part of the conversation, not like we're being spoken to and then dismissed. And I agree with Willis, listening to people goes a long way. And I think that that's part of the problem that we have here between us and city council and city staff is that we speak to y'all and then it kind of feels like y'all didn't really listen. And then we feel like we have to raise our voice. But then it feels like then we're pushed aside with microaggressions for doing so. But nonetheless, I still want to continue learning more about this. I'm a very quick learner. I've learned a lot in the last year. And I would really like to be a part of this advisory committee, Ari. So I will be sending you an email. And let me know how I can proceed so that we can make that happen.
Thank you, Ellie. Do we have any other speakers?
That concludes all the comments.
All right, thank you very much. I like that Esquire Willis. Thank you, Councilman Hurst. For your presentation. And I think we're looking for a possible motion to establish a seven-member community redistricting advisory advisory. Councilman Estrada.
I'd like to make the motion and move the recommendation forward.
A second.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Councilwoman Garcia. Are there any other comments before we continue? Rebecca?
Yes, these basically are directed at Beatrice, but maybe Mr. Willis may need to would like to make a comment or so. So first, Beatrice, are we having an election in June of two thousand and twenty?
Are you in twenty this year? No.
No, no, two thousand and twenty-two.
Yes.
Okay, the consultant on the League of Cities Latino Caucus stated that a redistricting map must be approved by December fifteenth for a June election. And it doesn't have to be approved until April seventeenth if the election is after July. So please verify that in terms of when do we really need to approve our map.
We have to comply with our city charter.
And so we can ignore what is requested by the Fair Acts?
You wanna?
Sure. My understanding is that you have the November election in two thousand and twenty-two, not June. So is that?
I I understood Councilmember Garcia asking if there's an election in June. Yes, there is an election in June, but not for council members. Remember, or in the simple election is in November.
Got you, got you. Okay, so it would be, we wouldn't have to, we could follow our charter for six months then.
Yes.
Okay, my next comment is in terms of the community outreach in our report, listed was that Facebook was the social media that we're going to be using. However, in past conversations, we have heard that the younger generation doesn't go to Facebook. They use Instagram. So I'd just like to ask you to add Instagram to our social media. And on the same note, I've been told that the Sentinel Sentinel has a higher readership than the Paheronian. If that is true, then you need to, we need to advertise in both newspapers and not state and or. So both newspapers need to have our advertisement. And finally, because we now know that we don't have to, we could use the six months according to our charter to approve a map. Then I'm just wondering in terms of the orientation for the advisory committee, do you think there's a need to have our that orientation ASAP? Or can we wait until after the end of September when we receive the final census data?
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Garcia, what do you mean by orientation?
Well, yeah, so for example, they need to know what community of interest means and what that
Oh, orientation as in definitions of all the things that, yes, okay, all right.
Right, right. And so I'm asking, should we have that orientation before we receive our final data at the end of September or can we wait until after September to have this orientation? And so that's just a question that I'm asking.
Yeah, we could have it before because it would be just like an orientation, letting them know what redistricting is. We don't need the numbers. But we could also wait. There's not much rush to get it done because we do have a little bit more of a leadway.
Okay.
But we could start looking at the schedule and see how it works best.
Okay, okay. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
All right, any other questions or comments, Councilman Hurst? You're still muted.
Sorry about that. I don't want to hog up the discussion here, but I think we do need to reflect upon the census because so much pivots on the census. And we had a lot of problems with the census, but we had some successes too. And I I always want to thank staff for their their very hard work on the census. But the fact is, we only counted about seventy percent of the people in the city. And I'm wondering, you know, how do we, how do we incorporate those that we couldn't count or didn't count? And and what effect would that have? And 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 how do we make sense of census data that is inadequate? And we probably know it, but might not be able to show it.
It's a really, really difficult question. And I think one that everyone is going to be facing. I I I think the short answer is that you you do have to, at the end of the day, depend on the census data as it's been modified by the statewide database. There is one, one or two things you can do, which is There is one, one or two things you can do, which is if you realize that you have an area of probably high growth that's coming in in the next 10 years, you could under, you could make that district perhaps a little bit smaller compared in terms of population compared to the other districts. Because you know, for example, that that district is over time, probably going to grow until, you know, over the next 10 years, a little bit more than the other districts. But it's a very good question, and I don't have a good answer for you. It's we'll just see what what the census data looks like. But the state spent $200 million to try to increase those efforts in the state.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Councilwoman Garcia then, and then we'll go to roll call.
I'm hoping we're going to adopt this motion. And so I'm asking, by when do we, as members of city council, have to recommend an appointment?
You approve the recommendations, we'll advertise the application process. And we are proposing that you establish the committee at your last meeting in May.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, and there's Councilman Gonzalez. I see you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just to follow up on the that question of establishment. When we establish this committee, is it the council as a whole in a vote on every individual, different district, or is it just responsible for the councilman's district for appointment of committee?
So you will nominate, each council member will nominate a person. And the council will, as a whole, approve the resolution to establish the committee with the members that each of you nominated.
So say if councilmen, just per se, if councilmen don't agree, four councilmen don't agree to one councilman's appointee, then can can the council reject that individual?
It has never happened, but I guess.
Trust Councilman Gonzalez to think of that scenario. Very interesting.
Well, you know, I asked this because obviously, the advisory committee was established last time. And council just kind of shoved everything they did back down their throats and decided to do what they wanted to do. So it's kind of disrespectful to create an advisory committee and then not acknowledge what the work they've done. Because you're doing political alliances, right? And if we're not going to agree with a certain persons to be on that committee as councilmembers, we have the right to to negate that. And so I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that process, right? And then if we are going to establish this committee, I feel that we really need to hold them and and take their input and follow their direction versus just allowing to, as some committee members or community members might say, waste their time and energy and not get paid for it. And then just sit there and somebody else turns around and does what they wanted to do. And that's shameful, right? And so that's why I'm leading down to that that question.
Well, I, you know, and I'm going to make a quick comment to end it before we go to vote is that all of us who are council members will do our due diligence and look to appointing people that will get the job done. And hopefully, it's not about politics. It's about people who want to get the job done and will move and work together and speak and learn, and they will work as a unit. And I agree with you, Councilman Gonzalez, that that's the kind of group that you want to move forward because that's when productivity happens. And I think that's what we all need to be very cognizant of when we bring our our appointees are, you know, to be voted on. So let's call the question and let's go to roll call on this motion by Councilwoman Estrada and second, I believe, by Councilwoman Garcia.
Estrada?
Hi.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gonzalez? Hirst?
Yes.
Montesino? Estrada, yes?
Can't hear you.
Parker?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. So we're moving on to 10B. Housing for a Healthy Santa Cruz, a strategic framework for addressing homelessness in Santa Cruz County will be receiving a report by the humans, by our county human services directors, Randy Morris and Robert Ratner. And they're here. Are we giving them access? And do they have, there's Randy Morris? And giving them access, you're going to have something projected for us? And then we'll ask clarifying questions. And then we'll have some public input at that point. Move forward. Okay. So thank you, gentlemen, and welcome.
Thank you, Watsonville City Council, and hi, City Manager Matt. And I hear Tomato's voice in the background. So you're back there somewhere. It's good to see some familiar faces. I had the pleasure of being in front of you in November, which I'll mention in a minute. I'm going to give some introductory remarks and then turn it over to Dr. Ratner, who I believe will be displaying a PowerPoint. But my comments are just to kind of frame this. So as was stated and is on your public materials, I'm Randy Morris, and I'm the Director of the Santa Cruz County Human Services Department. And we have four operating divisions in my department, just for orientation, the Child Welfare Division, the Public Assistance and Employment Division, some aging and disability programs like IHSS and APS. And as of November, and to today's presentation, a fourth division, and that was when our CIO and your former city manager Carlos Palacios made the decision that he wanted to enhance and improve our work in the field of homelessness and created the fourth division, which Dr. Robert Ratner was hired to lead, which is the Housing for Health Division. And I do want to make sure your city is aware that when we were hiring for this position that led to the hiring of Dr. Ratner, I had consulted with Carlos Palacios. And he actually wanted to make sure we had good South County representation. And your police chief Honda was actually on the hiring committee. So if you have any concerns about Robert's presentation, you need to talk to your police chief. I'm just kidding, trying to lighten the mood late in the evening here. So I want to make sure that your city council is aware, we only have one request of your city council this evening. I'm have been made aware from multiple sources that there might be some belief in your community that we're here to talk about particular sightings of services in your city. And I'm not sure if there was a misunderstanding or that was a preemptive interest by your constituents. But today's presentation is actually very straightforward and simple, we hope. And that is to ask for your city council to accept and file to embrace the framework, which I'll speak to in a minute, that we have been working on together with all four cities and the county and constituents and stakeholders, to try to develop a framework for how to approach this very, very complex issue and to do so together versus reacting to problems in a disorganized, not well-coordinated fashion. So that is what brought me in front of you back in November, right before Robert was hired to give you a preview of a draft framework. And then we spent the last many, many months working with all city manager offices, the community on revising that draft framework. And what's in front of you today is a request of your city council, and you are the first, thank you, Matt and Tomato. We're going to the other three soon after to accept and file that this is a framework that gives us a common language to work on this very complex issue. I do want to take a minute before turning it over to Robert to make sure that you are aware. But I am at a point in my career, 25 years in public human services work, five years in nonprofit graduate school before that. So at three decades of career in the field of health and human services, working on very complex public problems. I have come to see those things that are created by and solvable by local government. And I have come to see those things that are large, complex, profound, historic, that are much bigger than any city or any county can solve. And homelessness is one of those humanitarian crises in the United States of America, in the state of California, in all high cost of living areas that is much bigger than a city. It is much bigger than a county. The roots and history are not something we're going to talk about today. We have some things that are in our control, and we have many things that are not. And so a lot of what this framework is about is trying to maximize what's in our control, and that is how we collaborate and how we work together. We don't have the resources, as you'll hear in Dr. Ratner's presentation, to solve this issue. But we are very clear that what this community and many communities, particularly in high cost of living areas in California face finger pointing, frustration, lack of understanding lessens the power of our work together. And a part of what we're trying to bring forward is to get some common language, work on a collective impact model, and maximize what we need to do to better the outcomes. And we're aware as county, and I'll end my statements here, that this community, and before the appointment of Carlos Palacios, your former city manager, as the county administrator, Santa Cruz County did not put a lot of time and energy on taking a lead role in the community on addressing the issue of homelessness, which has been getting worse. So it's only been about four years that this work started with the county stepping up and saying, we want to be an equal partner to cities and work in our unincorporated areas to address this growing problem. And that led to what sometimes has been referred to as the Focus Strategies Report. I wanted to just make sure you're aware of that, which is two years ago, this nationally renowned consultant organization called Focus Strategies was hired to work with the county administrators office, worked with a lot of stakeholders. The pandemic COVID has interfered and delayed with the launching of this presentation because of our focus on stopping the spread of COVID amongst those experiencing homeless and all the FEMA money that were received to do that. But that that work, that consultant work, is what led to this draft framework, which was brought to your council back in the fall. Since then, there was a number of meetings. We worked with Matt and Tomato, your city manager's office, to give drafts. We met with a number of community groups. And what has brought forward is hopefully something that's more understandable. Hopefully, is a frame that we can all agree and work on. And I'm just going to end before turning it over to Robert. It's amazing what happens when you are a director in a county office that serves 100,000 people in the community, has a very large budget, and you kind of get a rhythm of the emails you get. In the day you're assigned responsibility to try to do something about this vexing issue called homelessness, your emails double and everybody's very angry. So I want to recognize this is an issue that confounds all of us. And just because Robert and I have a lot of experience in the field and work with populations like this, that doesn't mean we have all the answers, nor do we have the resources. But we really hope to partner with you all. We hope to be very honest. We hope to be very transparent. And I will just end with reminding your council, this is not a request for any granular action on your part to provide any particular service. We're happy to be here and answer any questions from your stakeholders or yourselves. But this is really just a simple ask to look at the framework and agree if this is the language we can use to help organize our work and the way we talk together over the years ahead. So I hope that introductory framework was helpful, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Robert Ratner to give the presentation and display the PowerPoint. Take it away, Robert.
Thank you, Randy, and thank you, council members. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and to present work that many of you are familiar with from the presentation that was given in November. And let me see if I get this going. All right. I want to go through some key elements of this framework that we're presenting to you and to folks who are listening in tonight and make sure we have time for questions and to hear from you. But as Randy said, we're really excited about the possibility of getting the county and the four cities within our county to work together under a shared framework for addressing homelessness. And the period of time that we propose for the framework is has already started, January 2021 through the end of 2023. And we have some goals tied to that timeframe. And Randy and I both work for the County Human Services Department, but our new division is actually staff supporting something called the Homeless Action Partnership. So that's the logo in the upper right corner. And the Homeless Action Partnership is a governing board that the federal government, the Housing, Urban Development, requires communities like Santa Cruz to have to bring key stakeholders together to work on the issue of preventing and ending homelessness. And one of the things we'll mention later is that came out of the feedback, there's a desire for us to update our governance structure and really look at maybe renaming that partnership. So we'll share more information with you about that in a moment. This is an outline of what I'm going to cover fairly quickly. Randy alluded to some of these points already. We received some feedback from a whole variety of stakeholders on the original draft presented back in November, and we're going to highlight what those are, give you a brief overview of the framework, share some stories. Randy alluded to this in the emails, some common themes that are coming up that maybe are getting in the way of us working effectively together. And we want to share those with you. I want to highlight some gaps analyses in terms of funding so that particular framework that we're presenting to the council is based on some statistical modeling that this group Focus Strategies did. And they they had some assumptions built into that. And we want to show, you know, if we implemented their proposed model, how much would actually cost and where the gaps are. And then I will briefly just talk about some highlights in the first six months of our work. And so you all have that information as well. So some of the feedback we received on the initial draft was it was too wordy. Can you make it easier to read and understand? So we condensed it, used a lot more graphics, simpler language. The community members that gave us feedback really wanted us to emphasize the importance of the cost of housing and people's incomes and the gap between incomes in our community and the cost of finding a place to live as a major contributor to homelessness. So we really tried to elevate the importance of that in the new document. There we got a lot of comments on, wouldn't we be better off if we spent more of our time and energy identifying people who are at risk of homelessness and preventing them from losing their homes rather than working with people after they've lost their housing? So we've tried to mention that shift, and we can talk more about that with you all. But we agree, and that's very important to kind of move upstream toward prevention. We had some comments that our original plan didn't really talk enough about how health issues impact people's ability to stay in home. And particularly issues that affect people's behavior. So health conditions that impact our brain, our ability to earn income and manage what, if you really think about it, are complicated tasks involved with maintain your housing, pay your mortgage, paying your bills, keeping the place clean, being good to your neighbors. There's there's a lot there that if you're struggling with health issues and you don't have the right supports, can really cause people to be at greater risk of homelessness or make it hard for people who are without homes to get back into housing. We received comments that we really needed to include some elements to this work on how do we work together across the county and the city and nonprofits to address large groups of unhoused people living together, encampments, and behaviors that sometimes can happen when people are living unsheltered. So we included some of that in our framework. And then the last comment that we wanted to lift up is that we received, I think, really valid and important feedback that we need to listen to people who've experienced homelessness and thinking about what can we do differently? How do we make our programs better? Where should we invest our resources? So our updated framework document includes changes that reflect that feedback. Now into the overview of the framework, we are proposing to reduce unsheltered homelessness. So that's folks who are living outdoors and places where people shouldn't be sleeping in half over this time period. And you can see on the right what this means in terms of our numbers in the county overall. And then reducing overall homelessness by a quarter. We had mixed feedback on on these goals. We heard some people say they're not ambitious enough, and some people say that they're not realistic. Later on, when I show you the model and the funding gap, I think you'll probably get the sense that I did that these are really stretch goals for us as a county. If we can hit these numbers in this time period, we should pat ourselves on the back. We've done some really amazing work if we can get there. So we're aim, I think we're aiming high with these goals. The framework also asks for us to really think about what are some guiding principles about how do we work together? So number one, we should really think county-wide in scope. How do we bring our resources and efforts together in an organized fashion across the entire community? When we articulate goals, let's make sure they're actionable, that we they're realistic, we can make them happen, that our programs are really centered on the people that we're trying to help to get back into homes and to transform their lives. Another key point that came up is the need for really thinking about equity and inclusion. If you look at the data on who's more likely to experience homelessness, you see a pattern that's fairly consistent in most counties in California and around the country that certain groups are much more likely to become homeless. There's different racial groups, different health conditions. And there are significant disparities that we need to be mindful of. Having a systems approach, really not thinking of investing in just one thing. If we invest in outreach, but outreach workers have nowhere to connect people, we really haven't taken a systems approach. We need to figure out how all the pieces fit together to get people connected to the right resources and on a path to housing. And I keep forgetting to change it. It says date driven, but it should be data and date driven, meaning that we should have clear timeframes and goals. But we also should be really looking at our data and whether we're we're actually getting the progress we need to. Related to data, there's some other graphs on this slide. The Focus Strategies modeling called for us to expand the number of people who are in our shelter programs that get into permanent housing, same for these other interventions, transitional rapid rehousing, as well as increasing our capacity. So we want to improve the quality of the work and the outcomes as well as increasing As well as increasing our capacity. So we want to improve the quality of the work and the outcomes as well as increasing capacity. And the model also called for us to be so good at it, we can get people back into housing faster. So there's a lot in that table, there's a lot of ambition. And then the goals that are in the framework down here below are what's our target for how many shelter and transitional housing beds we want to have. Rapid rehousing is a particular intervention that combines services with time limited. Income or rental assistance for people who are working to increase their income, help them get back into housing as quickly as possible. Help them get income through jobs or other means so they can afford that housing and then you you taper off that subsidy. So there's a request to expand in this framework. That model and then permanent supportive housing is deeply affordable housing for people living on fixed incomes with services attached to them. And this framework doesn't call for us to expand that significantly, but it really does call for us to look at expanding affordable housing. More broadly, to be able to get to our goals. So some key areas in the framework for action. Number one is building a coalition. So bringing people together who are really interested and passionate about doing something about this issue. And finding ways we can all contribute. Looking upstream, as I mentioned earlier, how do we prevent people from losing their housing? A lot of the work around homelessness. Is is not focused in that area and this community has really called us to think about how do we start to shift. Resources and programming more upstream into the prevention realm. How do we increase connections among our systems, but also how do we connect people experiencing homelessness back to people that can be really helpful and supportive in their lives? And then probably most importantly, how do we expand permanent housing options for folks using a different, a whole range of strategies, whether that's. More affordable housing subsidies, more shared housing, accessory dwelling units, finding ways to create more housing that's affordable for people. And then we want to get to our root causes with our actions. So it bolded here in part because of what we heard from the community, we really got to close that housing affordability gap, help people increase their incomes. Find ways to reduce the cost of housing. And that's really the number one thing we heard over and over again in our work to put this framework together. And then addressing the health issues that are impacting people's living situations. Making sure we're connecting people with the right kinds of supports for the duration that they really need those supports. And then I think as Randy alluded to, when there's such a challenging issue that reflects broad federal state on some level international. Influences, how do we not lose hope and a sense of purpose as people who are committed to ensuring that folks all deserve a place to call home? If we lose hope, the people who are experiencing homelessness certainly are going to have a hard time holding on to it. So. How do we work at both levels, the system, bringing hope and purpose to our work, but also bringing that into our relationships with the people who are at risk of losing their homes or experiencing homelessness. This is a diagram from a group at the state level that held the California Housing Partnership and they do snapshots of different counties and they happen to do a snapshot of Santa Cruz County in 2020. Looking at different income groups and what are the affordable housing gaps? I won't go too much into the technicalities and many of you may know these terms extremely low income. Is a term that refers to people who are generally living around 150% or 200% over the federal poverty level. And every community around the country, groups that are living at that income level are the most likely in the greater at greatest risk of becoming homeless. And to to create enough housing for all of those folks, all those households. In our community that are at income group, we need 10,000 more housing opportunities. So that's that orange dotted line graph there. And then the graph to the right shows. Who among people in our county are the most severely cost burdened? And when you're you're spending more and more of your income on rent and housing costs. Your one life event away from not being able to pay your mortgage, pay your rent. So it's that extremely low income group that is the most severely cost burdened. So we've got to find ways to create more affordable housing for them if we really want to prevent homelessness and homelessness in the community. One of the things that the framework calls for is for each of our jurisdictions in the county to. At a minimum, look at our regional housing needs allocation, housing development goals. And really focus in on a category called a very low income. So that's a step above extremely low income. But if you look at our data in Santa Cruz County, that's the kind of housing that there were, we're the least likely to actually develop. And that's true across the board and all the jurisdictions here in Santa Cruz, it's mostly true across the state as well. So if we're really going to end homelessness, we've got at a minimum, start hitting our regional housing need goals for very low income households. And then I alluded to how stories impact the way we think about the work. And they create the world we live in in some way. So these are a few of the stories that I think Randy and I have heard. As the new division has formed, one of the tensions is we see so many people without homes living on the streets and. We say, well, let's build, we got to get shelters, let's build shelters, we got to get people into tiny home villages and places quickly. And then that becomes all we do. So then the goal becomes how do we create shelter as a kind of permanent place for a group of people to live in? So. We've got to find the right balance between. Shelter and connections to permanent housing and we can't just invest in one. One of the narratives that comes up a lot around the state and nationally is that communities that feel like they're they're doing a lot around this issue. There's a belief that people come to our community. And they're from somewhere else and they're here because of our services and our programs. As we have a couple of data points on this and we're trying to get more, number one, in 2019, there was a count of people experiencing homelessness. And a survey that went along with that and about three quarters of people who experience homeless in Santa Cruz County are from Santa Cruz County. And there was a state website that just came online a couple of weeks ago that looked at. How many people experiencing homelessness crossover from one county to another? And across the state using data, there's a data system called the homeless management information system and statewide, it's less than 5% of people that actually cross over. From one county to another and are accessing services. The other thing that I wanted to share is that there can be a belief that what we see is the full story of homelessness. So. Often encampments near freeways, people living in really unsafe, unhealthy conditions, that becomes people's version of homelessness. But the vast majority of people experiencing homelessness are not living in that situation. We have people in cars, RVs, abandoned buildings, shelters. So don't let the the vision of the unfortunate situation that many people are living in in our community. Represent the full story of homelessness. There's a broad array of people experiencing homelessness. And this is the budget gap analysis that Randy alluded to, and what it shows here is. Some traditional kinds of investments and interventions you make when thinking about addressing homelessness. So proactive outreach, getting people connected to services. Temporary housing, shelter and transitional housing, rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing and affordable housing. The blue bar, if we we were to put some numbers to the strategic framework and how much it would cost based on the numbers I know from my experience in this work. The blue bar represents how much it would cost us that year to hit that target. And you can see the orange is what we have available now at the county level. And of the orange money, how much of it is one time funding? So the state has been going through a process with many of the counties of issuing one time funding to address homelessness. So there hasn't been a stable budget at the state level. So at the local level, it's hard for us to build programs and predict. You know, what can we do next year when we're living on a lot of one time funding? So you can see that here. And then the affordable housing that is the biggest gap and the most important thing for us to invest in. So overall, if we were going to hit this framework, and this only represents the money that we're aware of in the county, there's lots of other investments and ways that people can close this gap between the orange and the blue that we don't have here. But it's a big gap that we need to close and that's why I think we really need to bring people together and work together on this issue. These are some of the highlights from the first six months of our our framework. Efforts, the framework calls for us as a new division to develop six month action plans. And these are the things we're working on in this period, trying to be more transparent about the money we have, where it's going. We have invested a lot of our one time money in something we're calling the rehousing wave. We have done an amazing job in Santa Cruz County of helping homeless people get into safe. Temporary living situations and hotels, motels. Newly created shelters so that people aren't on the streets to reduce the risk of spread of COVID. And harm from an infection. And the money that is available to support that is winding down. So we've got a massive new effort that we're starting, that has started to help people get into housing on a permanent basis. We have a commitment from our housing authority to help us with additional resources for disabled guests at those sites. Changing the way we do our transitional housing and shelter. Efforts to get better outcomes. I highlighted the coalition building because one of the things we're working on is redoing our our governance board that the federal government requires. And one of our recommendations is to get nominees from the city council in the future. So we will come back to you on that, which one of the highlights. That part of our proposal is to stay engaged with each of our cities. And then working on encampment response, project home key is a way to bring in some money to create more of that affordable housing. So we're trying to prepare to be ready for that. There's getting to zero, there's a whole process, a national group called community solutions that provides technical assistance on how do you improve your efforts to get, get to zero people. Experiencing homelessness. So we're working with them and then part of that is actually getting better data and information out to. Our people, our community members and folks that we know what's really going on. And that's the end of our presentation. I'm going to take this down and. Save time for questions and answers and really look forward to working with you as council members in the community.
Thank you, Robert, for that presentation. Good evening, everybody. Does anyone have any questions for Robert? Council member Garcia.
First, I want to say homelessness is increasing in Watsonville. So I really do appreciate this framework to address homelessness. But I have two questions. A county wide scope states that homelessness occurs in all parts of Santa Cruz County, whether urban, suburban, agricultural or rural. What data do you have about farm workers being homeless and the indigenous population from Wauwahaka being homeless?
That's a great question. Thank you for it. The best data we have at the moment is from something that. The federal government requires us to do every two years is called a point in time count of people experiencing homelessness. And because that count is focused on collecting data in the federal kind of spectrum. We don't have good data on your question. The is ultimately the answer. The other thing I would say is that we do know in 2019 that there were. An estimated 370 people on a single night experiencing homelessness within Watsonville in particular. But some of the groups that you're talking about may be under counted. The other thing that comes up with this topic is how we define homelessness. So the federal government has a very strict definition of homelessness where people have to be living in a place not meant for human habitation. In a shelter or transitional housing program, but people who are doubled up overcrowded. Living situations often don't get counted. But many people in the public would think that they're homeless. So. Would appreciate some just suggestions for me, we're going to do another count in January of 2020 and would love to hear some ideas on how we can improve and get better data on those populations going forward.
Okay, thank you. And we will have suggestions.
Council member Garcia, may I? Add to Robert's answer because I'm remembering a comment, a question council member Estrada asked of me, I don't know if you remember this. Kind of a question, how does government connect? And Robert alluded to this, we came off of four years of a president with a very. Very difficult immigrant immigration approach and I remembering my answer to council member Estrada is something I want to share with you as an indirect answer to your question, council member Garcia. We have been having active communication with Watsonville based community action board and Maria Elena. About the benefit of us funding an organization who has established relationships with the immigrant community to help some healing. In the immigrant community to consider, and I'm sure this is a difficult decision for every individual family. Whether or not you want to respond to something through a CBO like CAB. To give information about yourself to the government, given the four years that just ended. So I just want to. I'm being abstract, but we are in active conversation under the umbrella of the thriving immigrant collaborative where I met council member Estrada and others. To try to help work together with her to help connect with immigrant community that's not exclusively but predominantly in your city. To help them educate families about what government services might be of help. So I just wanted to share that comment because then as the division we're talking about tonight, housing. For health, we're going to have another round of discussions when we do outreach to the community to get people to consider sharing information about themselves. It's a very. Difficult, complex space to be in to ask people to give information to us as government, given the populations you mentioned. I hope that was helpful, but I just wanted to connect that dot.
Great strategy, great strategy, working with CAB. So thank you. My second question, I saw that out of the 18 members of the project advisory group. It appears that only one member was from Watsonville. So the majority seemed to all be from North County. So I was wondering. Why were there not more representatives from Watsonville?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure which group you're referring to, council member.
In what we received, it was called the.
Hap, the hap maybe, Robert. Okay, and and let's give, let's give kudos to Matt Huffaker and Tomata Vitas on what your answer to this question is so that they know. The effectiveness of their city manager's office.
Yeah, I knew they were on the on the committee, but you know, there was 18 that were list names that were listed. And actually tomorrow was the only name from Watsonville. And so I'm just wondering. And what what the title was, was project advisory group was what the title was. And so in terms of the project advisory group, I'm wondering why there wasn't more representation from Watsonville.
And I think that that's an area where Randy just alluded to it, that we're fairly new to this framework and we want to do better, I think is the short answer. And the city manager's office has been working with us on the new kind of governing board and how do we make sure we have appropriate representation? From the Watsonville area. So that that's a correction that we want to work on with you all. Randy and I are in agreement that there's got to be more balance. And the stories and pictures of homelessness vary from one jurisdiction to another. So appreciate the comment and we're aware of it and we know we need to do better. At really bringing in voices from the Watsonville area into the conversation.
Very good.
And I want to be a little more specific, we. Through your city manager's office are going to work with Matt and Tomata to come back to you. And all four city councils and the board of supervisors and this entity called the continuum of care, which locally is called. The homeless action partnership to reconstitute the governance. And my reference was based on these conversations and your observation, we are recalibrating. To double the representation from your city.
Great, thank you.
Any more questions? Council member Hearst.
Thank you very much, Mayor. You know. In in my 30 years of of teaching, I learned, I learned a few things. You know, it wasn't just the students that learned, I learned a few things too. And one of the things that I found out was how the school district measures homelessness and there's a a student profile. That every student has and I was really surprised and this was decades ago. That there were so many students marked as homeless and when you quizzed them, they they really weren't homeless in the in the traditional sense that. You and I might think of it tonight, but some of them did live in cars and and most of them were all bundled up with multiple families and sleeping on the couch and. And things of that nature. They had a roof over their head. Sometimes, most of the time, some of them lived in tents in the backyard, some of them were in sheds, shacks and chicken coops. But you know, they were, they were marked homeless and I'm wondering how do we. It gets back to the common language. How do we really establish baselines and and common language? And what can we learn from the school district with their data collection and how does it apply to the to the good work of Dr. Radner, Radner and. And Mr. Morris.
I love that question. It's very timely. And I wish I had the answer to how do we get everybody on the same page with definitions? In my experience working on this issue for 20 years, it really does start at the federal government and we have all these different agencies that have different definitions. So the Department of Education has one definition. I trained as a physician and worked in healthcare for the homeless. They have their own definition. And then Hunt has a definition, the VA's got their definition. So if we all can work, work on getting the folks at the federal level to agree, that'd be great. But in the meantime. What I'm actually working on is trying to work with the county office of education. There's particular liaisons in the school district, they're called McKinney Vento educational liaisons. That are have some federal responsibilities to track this broader education definition of homelessness. And want to figure out how do we, how do we come to understand the population that's at risk of what? The housing people say is homelessness on the streets, etc. The housing people say is homelessness on the streets, et cetera. So we can get more to that prevention piece. One of our board members asked our new division to really focus on homelessness among children and gather data to see what will it take to make sure we have no child in the county without shelter? So one of the tasks I have over the next month or so is to work with the. Different school districts in the county office of education to understand their data related to our data and try to explain the differences. So. Appreciate the question, I think spot on, and we want to include the county office of education in our, our governing board. So that we can keep that dialogue going. And I also think it's where we can do a lot of the prevention work that the community wants us to do is. Those families that are living four in a small place, four families in a small place, that's where there's a risk of people actually losing their homes. And so how do we intervene before that happens? So thanks for the question.
Thank you, Dr. Redder. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Mayor Potem for filling in for me. I'm sure you did a fabulous job and go ahead with your questions.
Thank you. You know what, I, thank you, Councilman Hearst. That's where I was headed with one of my questions is talking about, I'm also a teacher of 30 something years. And I hear you talking about the, the county office of education and that's good, but here in the Paro Valley Unified. School District and the Paro Valley, we reach far and wide and it would be great if you also. Connected with the Paro Valley Unified School District in, in looking at that because as Councilman Hearst said. They've been doing it for a long time. It's very specific. And it also has to do with all of our demographics and, and the people that live here. I also want to bring up this whole thing about. What's going on out there in the community and what we got a lot of letters for and everything else about. And I wanted to bring it up because I wanted to ask you publicly, so everyone in the public could understand. Tonight you're here to ask us if we agree with the, this framework. This is not a commitment to do anything. This is not an imposition of, of different items. Or placements that'll happen within our city. This is, this is the beginning of our big conversation and we're trying to put everybody together in the room and to work for a coalition for our whole county. So that, that would be my first question, even though I led the witness a lot, so.
You led us correctly. You led us correctly.
Okay. And then, because I know how worried everyone has been with this and, and. I do have a question though, when we talk about this, and this is the beginning, so maybe the answer isn't there yet. When we move forward with it and you start to see. What the county could do within the county jurisdictions within our city. And what the city would be in agreement with. You know, is that what this body would work through? So that we won't have, you know, this horrific whoever did this, you know, scare of what's going to go down, you know, in the middle of Watsonville. Is that part of the conversation? And, and direction that this group is going to be focused on?
I'm gonna, you know. I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take a shot at answering from a process point and then I'm going to turn it over to Robert. If, if you might remember, I don't know what slide it was, the first bullet point he put forward was transparency. Robert and I have absolutely no interest in doing any secret anything. This issue is huge, it's complex. It brings out the worst of people for understandable reasons. And the last thing we want to be part of is a government system that has. Some money, not nearly enough. You saw that graphic, we are profoundly lacking in resources. And what we're interested in doing is having a process where everybody feels like they have a voice. This is a complex ecosystem with four cities and a big county and not enough money. And I do want to, at the risk of embarrassing myself, Robert or Matt or tomorrow, we have an excellent relationship with your city manager's office and. Anything that would touch your city footprint, we want to be active in collaboration staff to staff. And then figure out how and in what way to have conversations with electeds or neighborhood groups before decisions are made. Because these are complex issues. We want to move from, and I have a respect for my predecessors when we had an office of one person in the county that became two. And now we're in office of about eight and it's still not enough. There wasn't enough infrastructure to have active conversations and, and there's good reason why the community wondered if secret deals got made. So I just want to underline our interest, our investment, and we will work very hard to work with Matt and Tomata to understand what your politics and process and your constituent issues are. And if I may, at the risk of personalizing it, I want to underline the deputy director of the human service department. Emily Bali, who is from Watsonville, is not going to let me or Robert get away with anything that is going to compromise. Her city and her great work and relationships she has deal. So I'm, I'm probably over talking on process because we are not surprised. When the topic of homelessness ends up in front of the board or a city or anywhere that it brings out lots of people who have lots of feelings and opinions. Because it raises lots of concerns. We want to figure out how to work together collaboratively, transparently, and I'll end with this and turn it over, Robert, if you have to add more. We have this very, very odd moment in the United States of America, California, in this community with COVID. And we got millions and millions and millions of unexpected dollars. That more than doubled the system that we have. But it was for a very, very narrow purpose. And that was to stop the spread of COVID amongst those who are unsheltered. That wasn't a, that was a complex system. We stood up overnight and we, mission accomplished. We're one of the communities that had almost no outbreaks of COVID amongst those experiencing homelessness. So we accomplished that goal, but it created other issues. And the horizon we're dealing with now. Is when, since Biden was put in office and the Senate split 50 50. And a lot of money has been going to marginalized communities. We now have an extension of our funding till September 30th. But what we're worried about is on September 30th, when we lose our federal funding. That doubling of services, if it all goes away, we do not want people going back on the streets, including people in your community. So we want to work together over the next many months to figure out how to minimize people going back to unsheltered. And get people in permanent housing. And when issues come up like, do we want to place a temporary shelter here or there to help? People move from a current COVID shelter to a temporary shelter. We will have conversations with your city about that and your constituents about that. So I hope that wasn't too much of an answer, but we're very committed to process and transparency.
Any more questions? Oh, more?
No, that's fine. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Any more questions? Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Pro-Ten Mayor, you did an excellent job. I thought you were going to get us through like this before 8:30 and hopefully we will, we will. My question is on the, on the core goal is number two, the expanding of capacity within homelessness and the response system. For the temporary housing and beds. You know, that's the big issue, right, of, of occupancy, the lack of occupancy, especially within the city of Watsonville. How are we going to address this? I mean. Because the numbers are challenging numbers, right? I mean, you, do you agree with that?
I think all of the numbers are challenging. And the, the goal of 600 temporary beds. Will be challenging at least on two levels. One is finding appropriate locations that are supported at the community level, but the. Actually more fundamental is, do we have the money? To actually run them well and to run them in a way that they're, they're good neighbors and that they're getting good outcomes for the participants. What I've observed and I'm pretty early in my career in the county. We seem to move sheltering programs around. That aren't adequately resourced, that don't get good outcomes and they go from one location to another. So my recommendation, and I think the recommendation, the framework is that we really bring the community together. Trying to make sure we've got a good amount of resources to run a quality program and that we may actually help more people. By running, running those quality programs as opposed to lots of poorly funded scattered programs around the county. And one of the big challenges in this whole area of homelessness. From a policy perspective is. How do we figure out how to share responsibility and multiple levels of government? And at the local level. I think the cities are often faced with the most challenging situations. So you know, what's the right level of investment? How much capacity? Do the city and county build in Watsonville versus unincorporated parts of county in the city of Santa Cruz? We need to figure that out together. So in, in theory, our new governing board is a place where we can have that conversation. And if we have a goal of 600, but we can only afford 200. Okay, where are we going to, where are those 200 going to be? And get everyone around the table and figure out what makes the most sense and using data. So if we know that. Half of the population is in the city of Santa Cruz, well, perhaps half of our shelter capacity should be there. So finding some principles that we can use to agree on to hit, hit those targets. Is where I'm personally trying to, to move us forward. But it has to be grounded in the reality of how much money we have and. Making sure we're actually funding the program so they're good neighbors and they're getting good outcomes.
Well, thank you for this and, and I, you know, I'm glad to see that as a county, we're coming together. And, and try, try and tackle this issue of homelessness. Because it does affect all, all of us within the county and the state and this country. Because they are our neighbors and, and, and they are our community members too. A lot of us are touched by homelessness. Some of them are friends that we grew up with and we've seen them now struggling with life. And then some of them are coworkers that can't afford to, to have their own place. And, and they're living in, in dwellings that aren't acceptable. So I think we need to continue moving on, but collaboratively, all working together to, to try to. It's not going to be solved, but try to make it easier on the community overall. Thank you.
Any more questions? All right, I have two questions. One is, I, I used to be the president of the Parrow Valley Shelter Services for two years as a board member for three years. And so I've seen homelessness in our community directly. As, as you know, there's different types of homelessness from, you know, emergency shelters to transitional shelters. All the way to affordability of housing. Completely different levels of homelessness, if you want to talk about it, it's going to be very, very costly. With the history of our community here in Watsonville being overlooked by the county on many levels. You know, funding through measure D to our roads out in the unincorporated area. That's not the city because we're a different entity. To, as we just discussed this evening, being a lack, lack of representation on our advisory boards. What kind of formula do you plan on using to ensure that those that, that we down here in South County? Will be guaranteed the appropriate funding for this issue, especially since it's so limited.
First of all, Mayor Dutra, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you. It's nice to meet you on this odd platform of two dimensional video. I hope to meet you someday in person and work with you. I heard, may I confirm, I heard two questions, but I just want to make sure I tracked. Different types of homelessness and I wasn't sure if that was leading to a question. And then connected to but different, I heard a question about. How to ensure resources are shared appropriately and I, I could speak to either, but I just want to make sure, did I hear two different questions?
Well, I think we would like to have resources for all of, all of it, right? And whether it's transitional, emergency, horrible housing, you know, vets. Loss of job, loss of luck, you know, you know, homelessness, whatever it looks like, that's going to be addiction, mental health. There's going to be a lot of, probably a lot of costs in this, correct? And how will you ensure that all that gets covered and that we get our fair share down in South County?
So I'm going to say a couple of comments. I deeply appreciate as somebody who's been here for 15 months that my boss, Carlos Plasios is the former. City manager and brings that perspective and my deputy director Emily Bali lives, born, raised, proud Watsonville. We are constantly, as a human service agency, our responsibility is to calibrate our work to the most marginalized. And I will say 15 months, it took me about two of 15 months to realize the gravitational political pull is always to the North County, as you all. Know way better than me, but I want to affirm that is what I feel and see. In the gravitational pull. So our mission, one of the reasons Carlos decided to move the office from the CEO's office. To health and human services and he left it to the both of our agencies to figure out where to house it and we have it in human services. Because we, if we endeavor to calibrate our work to appropriately distribute resources where the biggest need is. And I'm in complete agreement. And I'm not sure you said this directly, Mayor, but I think it's implied. Some of the issues are less visible or less pulling at county. And I think the history is it's been pulled north. So we have to figure out a way to work with the city of Santa Cruz, which has its own issues and demands and they're tied up in a federal lawsuit and they have lots of pressures they ask of us. But we have to do our job and I think the answer is we want to have a process more transparent. And you hold us accountable. We work staff to staff with Matt and Tomata, they'll hold us accountable, but when we're back in front of you, judge us, ask us, we're going to be very open and honest and we want to move away from. The money that I think historically has felt like a black box, like some secret little place where money gets decided and people know where it goes. We want to lift that up and have it be more open. And have it not be that a couple of people make a decision in a little black box, but it's more transparent or more open to the community. And then we can all together own the decisions. We're not there yet, but we are moving there and this framework helps us give us common language. When we're back in front of your council, we will talk more about this governance structure, probably this summer. And that would be more of a moment where we could talk to you about where those governance decisions are made about resources. So I think that'll be another moment to talk to you all and revisit this question and an answer to it. So I hope that's responsive and Robert, please add anything more specific if you'd like.
The only thing I would add is that. I, I worked in the county behavioral health department and we were lobbying the state around their formula for distributing funds. And, and what I learned from that process is that. People have different perspectives of fairness and it's often colored by their experience and their interests. So I, I echo what Randy said, we have to be more transparent. Have those conversations about how are we going to decide, going back to the example of, we have enough money for 200 shelter beds. Where are they going to go? How are we going to decide that? We actually asked the question, we just don't, we don't just decide it. So the, the same is true for, I mean, an example which some of you may be involved with is the regional housing needs allocation. So the housing targets. So that whole process of how do you bring a group of people together to hit, to agree on some housing targets at different income levels over an eight year period? It's not an easy conversation, but ultimately you land on something and then you kind of move forward. So I'm hoping that that's what we do with this new governance process. And as Randy said, that you, you hold us to it and keep reminding us. About finding the right balance with investments. I appreciate the questions and the comments tonight.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. And I, I appreciate you guys, your thorough answer and. I know Emily very well, so you know, I probably plan on being involved in this conversation. I've been part of this conversation for years and. I, I want to make sure this is a really big issue we're facing in our community and it's only increasing. I have another side question and I think this is just for many people in our community who are just very curious and maybe you can give a little update on it. The vets hall, I mean, that's a temporary. How is, it's temporarily housing homelessness. I hear it's going to be closing soon. Where do we plan on putting the people that are currently there? And then also, had there ever been any discussions of any sort of, I know you said transparency earlier about, you haven't started the process yet, but. Has, just have you guys even discussed about having any sort of homelessness? Encampments going in at the property behind the old court, well, the, the county building now. That, this is my district. I received calls last night. I've received many emails and. Want to make sure that the residents in my district feel assured that there has never been any conversations. A lot of people like to see a park go there, so you can see their, their concern. So if you can talk about both those places in detail, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, the, I'll start with the veterans hall first. So we have veterans hall in Watsonville and one in the city of Santa Cruz that have been helping with the COVID-19 sheltering efforts. As well as hotels in both the city of Santa Cruz and Watsonville. And we have FEMA funding through the end of September for the non-car grid shelters to help support that effort. But the capacity and the resources we have to keep the sheltering programs going, the two vets hall won't allow us to stretch out that far. So the, the FEMA goes through September 30th. Our board today actually approved some. An application to the state for some additional community development block grant coronavirus funding to give us a little bit more of an extension. With some of our isolation and quarantine hotel programs. But the vets halls, we're going to be working with, I alluded to this in the presentation, a rehousing wave. So we've got three teams of providers, we would call rapid rehousing funding. Some new vouchers from the housing authority. And we're going to try to help as many people at the vets hall to get into permanent housing before we need to close it down. And likely it'll be in the late summer, early fall that we need to, for financial reasons. Wind that down. And then I think the other part of it is, we'd be happy to explore with you all and that conversation of shelter, like what do we? Like what do we, where do we want to have shelter in the city of Watsonville long-term? Cause we, we do have some money and we do need to make some decisions about, um, where we do want to have a, a high quality shelter program. And then to the other question, Randy and I have not at all been involved with any conversations about a managed encampment on the Freedom Boulevard campus. And I, I frankly, I don't know where that rumor started. And we would, we would not, um, move forward with any of that concept at all. And as a matter of fact, our, our board directed us to not support managed encampments with our dollar, the board of supervisors, because they feel like we can do better. We can run higher quality sheltering efforts to get better outcomes. So our direction as staff from our county board is to not, um, think about putting public resource. So I'm not sure where that rumor got started.
Great.
And, and Mayor, I, I just want to expound upon that, what I admit is a speculation. Um, what dots might be connected, because I know our CAO, Carlos Plasio's got a call from some of the neighbors, um, hearing the same rumor. So we heard this a couple of weeks ago before this, um, petition got sent around. The county board, and there have been discussion and stakeholder meetings that in order to avoid having people end up on the streets, um, it, what if anything can be done to find other temporary shelter arrangements? And then there's been some advocacy amongst community members, not us, Robert just mentioned, it's not our, we don't think it's the best investment of public funds to maybe find other places to put managed encampments. I, I speculate that because the county owns property that hasn't been purposed yet, or if it is, it's way on the horizon, that people started connecting dots and saying, well, what about county property? So somewhere in there, I believe somebody put together, um, on just sort of a wish list of, but we have not acted on any wish lists. Um, but county property is at least a starting point of a discussion. But just to double up on Rob, uh, Robert said, we are looking to try to find ways to not invest our money in temporary encampment, um, services. And, and if anything gets the light of day around county property, that's not in city jurisdiction, we would, because it's in city limits, we would want to work with your city manager's office and follow their lead about how to work with neighbors and with electeds. But there's been no discussion within the county about any action plan, about anything to do with that campus.
Great, thank you. And I think this clarification is really great tonight, especially, um, on the vets hall as well. Because a lot of parents have been, I know contacting, um, people, you know, us in the, well, in the council. Um, and we were, I think, I, at least I was under the assumption it was going to be removed. Um, and the, during the summer and ready for school, but it sounds like this, that, the, that could go until Sep-, um, September, it sounds like.
So Robert, Robert, why don't you talk about how we have slowed down and we're in the process of demobilizing? To put a little bit of specifics on what we're doing with the, the North and South County vets halls.
Yeah, we, we have, uh, stopped making referrals to the, both of vets halls. And, um, the vets halls will be the first sites that we demobilize. Um, so, uh, I'm not sure when your schools start, but I'd probably be, uh, around that time when the schools start that the, the, the vets, um, hall in Watsonville will probably be demobilized or close to being demobilized is my guess. Um, the hotels, we're keeping them longer because we have more clear FEMA funding to support them. Cause those are isolation and quarantine, people have private rooms. Um, so we feel like we can sustain them longer. Um, so for some of the folks in the vets hall that meet the FEMA criteria, they may be relocated to hotels. And then we have all those rehousing resources that we're trying to bring to bear and it'd help as many people as possible get into permanent housing before we have to close down the current operation.
Thank you, thank you.
And I, and I think, Robert, am I tracking correctly, the numbers, the census would hopefully, even if we're not completely demobilized by the high school starting, would be significantly lower.
That's correct. And then, okay, it's, uh, actually dropping down slowly now. Um, cause we're, we're doing that work of matching people who are eligible for private hotel accommodations. We're doing that work now. Um, so we should see the numbers declining.
And, and I do want to insert, I hope I'm not over talking, but I'm trying to connect dots between things I heard when I was in front of your council, uh, in the fall. I think it was District Two, uh, Councilmember Gonzalez, you mentioned, because that's where the hall is. And you kind of had some pretty straight talk with us about, um, issues, overflow issues. Though we were successful in stopping the spread of homeless, there was, uh, a lot of issues I heard from a lot of people about the impact in the neighborhood. And so I just want to let you know, one of the things that conversation inspired was us working with Matt and Tomata and, um, Cab that currently has a one-time funding to do this program called Watsonville Works, which does some sort of cleanup in the community. And we're actually in process to try to, um, bring county, uh, human services, health services and your city together to make sure that funding continues and expands that program. So while the vets halls demobilizing, we can hopefully, um, keep going, um, and bring more county dollars so that you have a small match to sort of bring together this program to help make sure there's some services in there, like there have been put in place through a program called Downtown Streets Team in North County. And it, it did, and this gets back to Mayor Jimmy, your comment. There was funding arrangements in place for City of Santa Cruz services that were not in place, um, in Watsonville. So we immediately have been working with your city manager's office to try to July 1st forward, get a funding arrangement together to keep that Watsonville Works program going. And I only share that to say, um, should the vets hall be still open July 1st forward? We hopefully have some services around there to deal with some of the community concerns around cleanup and whatnot. So I, that I just want to let you know, Mr. Gonzalez, District Two, we heard you. And we were talking to Matt and Tomata ever since then about that.
Great, thank you so much. That was very clear.
Thank you, Randy. Um, the, the staff has kept me abreast and I appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing.
All right, at this point, we'll go out to, um, the public, if there are any public comments. Tomata?
Steve is gonna be promoted, but okay. Is Steve?
Yes, um, in going out, uh, and cleaning up, um, the slews, our beautiful waterways that we have here in Watsonville. Uh, we have noticed in groups of, uh, five and six, as we do volunteer work to help keep our beautiful flora and fauna in beautiful, good condition. Uh, quite a number of homeless people who simply have nowhere to go. And when I've talked to a few of them, some of them do not wish to go inside. They wish to live where they are, along with the birds and the various beautiful creatures that live in the lagoons. And so I want you to, I want you to be, both of you to be aware of this. Because it is, uh, um, I don't know if it's a matter of choice or a matter of fear of being enclosed. But, um, you're going to have to have social workers who can talk to those individuals who have a fear of leaving the encampments that they're in, in the slews and the waterways and going to live inside. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next caller?
Nancy, go ahead.
Hi, um, they, I want to thank you guys for all the hard work you're doing, because I'm really impressed with your sticking with this. And I thank you, Mr. Morris and Dr. Ratner for all your information. Um, I'm a Nantica classroom, the barrow, a teacher of 40 years experience and a class of volunteer. And, um, as a class, I believe every child needs a loving and a safe home. And I also believe that every person needs a safe place to lie their head, to lay their head down. Um, what happened to me, I live on Bruington, across from my house against the wall, an RV came. And I thought, that's interesting. And I work right here looking out. So I watched them and I saw the men get in the truck in the morning and go to work. And I saw the woman, the one woman there walk around, make sure everything was clean. And I saw the children walk to a park. And I thought, these are really good neighbors. They don't make any noise. They clean up after themselves. And then another neighbor of mine called in and said, call the police, the police came to the place and while I'm watching, and immediately the RV left. And I was kind of heartbroken. I thought this family needs a place. I called the police and I said, can you give them, did you give them recommendations about where they can go next? Where can they go? They have children, they should have a place they can go. They're trying to provide for their family. So that was really upsetting. And then I got this flyer saying, keep Watsonville safe, prevent homelessness in our community. Because people heard about the possibility in the health center. And I thought, number one, do these people not know we have homeless people here? They've been living behind me in the field at one time and they were very good neighbors. They were across the house from me and they were very good neighbors. I talked to somebody on the street who's trying to avoid looking like a homeless person. And I think, do they not know these people are here? And when you make that sort of comment, I thought, this is right up there with the redlining. I came from Palo Alto, that's where I was raised. It's up there with not in my backyard. It's up there with, oh, it's going to affect my home value. Having given people places to be. And I'm tired of those opinions. There are homeless people who need a safe place as you all know, to rest their heads. We cannot pretend they don't exist.
Thank you.
We need to question why, pardon me?
You have to wrap it up, Nancy. You get two minutes to speak, but thank you.
Yeah, okay, I'm just, it goes to my heart. So.
No, absolutely. We appreciate your comments. Thank you so much.
Headster. Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. I just had a couple of questions regarding, I think, related to the funding, I guess, that this, the county received for the temporary, uh, housing to curb COVID. Am I correct on that? Um, so I've noticed recently that there is limited accessibility for non-able-bodied individuals to access a lot of these, um, housing. I know that there was somebody recently in a wheelchair who had a hard time receiving services from the vets hall when seeking shelter to find, I guess, relief from exposure to COVID. Um, I, I'm noticing that there's a few hoops that this person had to jump in in order to find adequate and stable housing. I don't know if you guys have been made aware of that. Um, I was also told that there isn't any shuttles or transportation services in the area to, I guess, give these people better access to housing. So is there something that can be done as far as funding goes to give transportation to these shelters in the coming months? Um, yeah, and then as far as, uh, using some of that funding to provide access to vaccines for houseless bodies, is that included in the funding? Um, I think that's the only questions that I had at the moment. Also, is there a plan to outreach, like committee to be formed that's going to go directly onsite to these encampments? To kind of discuss the direct needs of the homeless?
Okay, so, um, this is a comment section. So, you know, if the, to get answers, if you'd like to send an email in to us, we'd, um, have somebody from our staff, um, get you, get back all those questions to you.
Yeah, totally. I'll drop it all right now. Thank you so much.
Oh, no, thank you for coming to the meeting. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Have a good one.
Go ahead, Ellie.
Hey, so I'd like to say thank you to Nancy for your caring comments. Our city needs to invest in education and compassion towards our houseless neighbors. Because it's all lack of education. Um, affordable housing or lack thereof is a huge contributor, if not the biggest, to houselessness. As we can see in the affordable homes shortfall and the cost burden households. Y'all are most likely in the moderate income after seeing those salaries y'all get. But I urge you to put yourself in the shoes of extremely low income and work on changing those requirements of only 20% of affordable housing when we build these new buildings. Because as you can see, less than 5% of people across counties. So these are, these are our community members, you are ultimately responsible for displacing. When you say things like, it's not fair that we need more affordable housing than Santa Cruz, especially since we know Watsonville poorly compares to Santa Cruz when it comes to buildings like the project that we saw a few months ago in Dutra's district. I want to know for this committee, whatever coalition that you're building, if you're going to reach out to act, our actual houseless neighbors. I know, I think that there's a PV River Homeless Union that Monique was ahead of. And there are small groups of people who have been doing outreach and communicating that is inclusive of individuals who are houseless. Dutra, you say that you're a part of the conversation, but then you focus on people wanting to park, the park, right? So that along with your vote on the affordable housing building going in your district, it makes me feel like your words are performative. Actions speak louder than words. So I want to know how we can actively create something like the LA County just created. Something to help our houseless neighbors. Because they matter as much as everyone else here and they are not accessible to come to these meetings. They do not, you know what I mean? So if you want inclusivity, I really ask you go.
Thank you, Ellie.
Hey, Nancy, talk for an extra 30 seconds. I'm almost done. I just ask you to make, when you do the outreach, to go to our actual houseless neighbors and include them in the conversation and a part of these committees, um, to represent us, not just city staff, but actual houseless neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Next caller?
That concludes publicly coming, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Um, I'll bring it back to, um, the council, does for any comments or a motion? Councilmember Estrada?
I'd like to make the motion to move the recommendation forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Estrada. Oh, that was a tie.
I'll second it.
I saw Councilmember Gonzalez's faces in the middle of my screen, so there you go. Um, okay, um, Beatrice, I don't see you, but there you are. You're in the top of my screen. Go ahead.
All right, Estrada?
Hi.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Hi.
Hurst?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Parker?
Yeah.
Dutra?
Yes, thank you. All right, now I believe, I don't have my thing in front of me, but it's emergency items is next? No, yes, hi. Randy?
No, I was just saying goodbye. Thank you.
Oh, okay, I'm waving, bye. Bye, you guys. Thank you for, thank you for coming to, um, give that presentation. We really appreciate it.
Yes, a lot of work to do together.
A lot of work to do, absolutely.
Bye.
Bye. All right, um, with no emergency items, this meeting is adjourned.
Hey, hang on, Dutra, Mayor Dutra, the, her set his hand up.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I think we do have an emergency item here. You know, I was, uh, at the RTC meeting, uh, a couple of weeks ago and it was pretty clear that they had not heard the voice of the Parro Valley and the city of Watsonville. And so, you know, I think we should have a, a, a new or ref, I know we had some kind of resolution, uh, speaking our mind or supporting the, uh, business plan. But I think we need another go at it because they're, they're going to have another meeting and they couldn't decide what to do last time. And I just don't want to see the Parro Valley left behind. Uh, socially, economically, uh, you know, transportation justice wise. And so I think that we, we had, we, we were trying to get something on the agenda, but it, for one reason or another, it just couldn't work. So I think that, you know, we need to have more dialogue, uh, to and with the RTC, because clearly it's, it's, they're, they're not hearing, uh, our concerns.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Hurst. Um, I believe this did come in after, um, the, uh, agenda review. Um, there's a process, it did not make that timeframe. Um, I will leave this up to Alan to speak about emergency items. I believe they're only left meant for natural disasters and things of that nature.
Basically, yes, it has to be some sort of fundamental emergency, an earthquake, a, uh, landslide, uh, car, you know, a plane crash, something like that. Uh, otherwise it does not qualify because it was available before the agenda and, uh, is within 72 hours. So it does not qualify as an agenda item.
Thank you. What I do suggest, there was a resolution passed last year. So there is a resolution on file, which I think that you should, um, you know, present. Um, and if it, and council members should go and, um, you know, speak on this item at the actual, um, meeting. Yes, Councilmember Gonzalez?
Uh, to council, um, you know, this was brought to the mayor's attention. And, uh, from what I understand is the mayor had the authority to be able to put it on the agenda. And the mayor is the one that told us all the decision not to put it on the agenda. So I just wanted to make sure that the community was aware that the mayor was.
Well, let me be completely aware.
Agenda.
So this is the truth. It came in after the process. So there is a process. It needs to go on before, on the Tuesday agenda review. You know that. And you brought it to me.
But the mayor's, the mayor's, the mayor's got the authority, right, council?
I'm speaking.
I asked council.
Councilmember Gonzalez, I'm speaking. This came to me on Wednesday.
I asked council a question, so.
I am, listen.
I've been asking you a question, so.
You don't have the authority. Uh, right now, it came to me on Wednesday.
It's about who, who was, question was directed to, but the question was not directed to you, Mayor.
Well, you know what? I'm the mayor and I'm speaking right now. And I'm telling you, there's a process and I'm not going to override it. There's the, it was supposed to be there before Tuesday. It was not there before Tuesday, it was on Wednesday. You were trying to add something onto the agenda bef, with, by overgoing the process. There is a process. I am trying to be transparent to the community. If there is something that needs to go onto the agenda, we're going to do it by the rules. If you want to bend the rules, you can bend the rules when you're the mayor. I'm not going to do it. Thank you.
Well, I hope that sure, surely hope we can get it on next month.
Bring it on. Next week, if you want on the next meeting, absolutely.
There's my, right there.
There you go. There you go.
Mayor, if I, I could also add, uh, I just want to make it clear to the council, there is absolutely not a violation of the Brown Act for you folks to go, all of you, and speak at another public meeting on an item on the agenda. It's perfectly okay for the whole council to go and speak at that meeting on that agenda item. And is also, as somebody mentioned, it is also perfectly okay for all seven of you or any subset of you to write a letter or email another body and advise them of what your individual direction is as a member of the council. The only thing that we're talking about here tonight is the council acting on an item that's not on the agenda.
Yes, and my, as the mayor, I was, I'm following a process. I'm not going to bend the rules. Now, I know if, if people want to bend the rules, that is up to them, but there is a process. It is in order. And unless it's an emergency that I need to add it, that's how it's going to work. Everything that is going to be on the agenda is going to happen before Tuesday, so that the public is completely aware that it's on the agenda. Adding an emergency item on this doesn't give either side the opportunity to speak on it. So in, in trying to be fair to everybody, this should have been agendized properly.
Well, I would agree with that. I just want to make sure the RTC hears the voice of the Pahril Valley and understands our, our, our needs. And I'm not sure that they have.
Well, everybody can, should speak. They should show up to the meetings. Absolutely.
That's why I'm trying to look for a collective voice from the council.
Well, you have one from last year. You can use it. Councilmember Montesino?
That is kind of prior to their business plan. The business plan is, is kind of a new thing.
Okay, well, then we can get on the agenda for next meeting. I have no problem with that.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Montesino?
Um, just a question for staff and, or, or Alan. Um, so what's the process to, uh, to put a special meeting, just to have a vote on it? Uh, forget, you know, what's passed, what, um, what about the future? Um, it takes seventy-two hours. Um, well, read the process for us to put just a special meeting, have just that agenda, you know?
I think a special, I think a special meeting requires twenty-four hours uh, notice. Beatrice, is that correct?
Yes, twenty-four hours.
So you would, the earliest you could have a meeting would be at eight forty-three tomorrow night, assuming that the notice went out immediately tonight. So it would require uh, some form of simple agenda and that would have to be posted. I don't know how soon that could happen. And then twenty-four hours after that, the council could meet.
How do, how do we make that happen?
So um, it would need to be a majority of the council interested in holding a special meeting. Sounds like the, the only agenda item would be approving a resolution in support of the RTC business plan that they'll be considering on May sixth. Um, so we would defer to the will of the council.
I'll make a motion that we have an emergency meeting except for um, April thirtieth.
I'll second that. Is that the process? Okay, all in favor?
I'm looking for, before, before there's a, before there's a roll call, I'm looking to our city attorney to ensure that the proper process is being followed.
Yeah, I, I, I think you could do that. The only item on the agenda would be the uh, this one item. Uh, and uh, the city clerk, I assume, could get the notice out? Yes.
Well, if I may, Mayor, I, I just want to make sure that, you know, the, the council is fully informed as well as the public's fully informed as to, you know, what the ingredients in the uh, in the business plan are and that it's really just a plan. And it's uh, it doesn't make a commitment to anybody financially or with any specific actions. But it is uh, moving forward and it's a, you know, it's a guideline of some kind.
Right, thank you. And, and my thing is there's a process. So thank you, Councilmember Montesino, for educating yourself on how the process works and not coming in, in attacking me for not wanting to put it on the agenda. All it took was a simple addition for an emergency meeting um, for another day, twenty-four hours, and this could have been solved. So we don't need to bend rules here to be getting, to getting our work done in our community. Um, yes, Mayor Potem?
Uh, I just want to say I cannot attend tomorrow at eight forty-five PM. So if you want to make it Thursday, that would be something different, but tomorrow night I will not be able to.
Um, the motion is for April thirtieth.
Okay.
And right, it would require four votes.
At what time on April thirtieth? Cause I have some other meetings on that day.
Eight forty-five PM.
Well, April thirtieth allows time for uh, a little more flexibility. We could hold the meeting in the afternoon if it was the will of the council. I'm sure that would be staff's preference, um, as much as we love uh, council meetings on Friday, Friday nights.
Um, sorry.
Can we, can we set it for?
Yeah, and it's more than twenty-four hours. So yeah, sometime in the afternoon is fine.
Four thirty?
So I, I can't make it, but I mean, you'll need a majority, so.
Four thirty, four thirty on Friday, April.
Oh, yeah, and, and I'm gonna have to see. I'm not saying that in any other way, except for I have other responsibilities during that time. That's all. So I have to see.
I do as well. Thank you.
Do we have roll calling, yes?
I assume there's a motion, so you would take four of you to vote to do that.
So does a simple majority or do you have to do, does um, Beatrice have to take a roll?
Roll call. Estrada?
Hi.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Hi.
Hurst?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Dutra?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. All right, um, are there any um, other agenda items that you would um, like to be considered for a future meeting? Councilmember Hurst?
Well, I, I don't know if we have to have a uh, agenda item, but I'd just like to get a report on how traffic calming is going in the city. You know, we've, we've heard a lot of comments from the public about reckless driving and speeding and, and other traffic issues. Just, you know, some reported sometime, it'd be fine with me.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, um, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.